Hey, thank you Claudia.
You're welcome.
This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on October 22, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board of the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the clerk of Princeton on October 17, 2025, and has been posted to the municipal website wwwprincetonnj.gov/meetings. Pursuant to Executive Board of 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during this declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times, and was filed with the clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year, and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the clerk of Princeton. Notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you please call a roll?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
You're muted, Arlen.
Sorry, here?
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Mr. Dobkin?
Here.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. We have two resolutions this evening. They're in your packets. The first is case Z24-518, 254 Witherspoon Street, Block 6507, Lot 17, in the B1T zone. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or would like to make a motion on the ordinance? On the resolution, excuse me.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Michael.
And also make a comment to Karen. They did an amazing job.
Oh, thank you.
That was a tough one. Okay, Claudia, can you please call a roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the second resolution, I have a problem with one of my vocal cords, so excuse me. The second resolution is Z25-640, 151 Carriage Way, Block 9601, Lot 17, in the R1T zone. Once again, the resolutions are in your packet. Questions, comments, or motions, please.
I did have a comment.
Okay.
Suggestion. Well, just an overview of it. I was thinking, although it says we approved a one-story, 394 square foot, I would suggest that it also sort of spell out that some of that was as of right. You know? This would go page three, number five.
Yep.
Where it says 394, and it might add something that, you know, X number of square feet, I think it was about 191. It wasn't specified at the meeting, although I did talk about it at the end. So, you know, it wasn't, what caused the variance was the difference between 15% and 15.5%, which was somewhere around 183 square feet.
All right, so if we added the words "a portion of which" would be permitted by right?
Yes.
Do you want to get more specific than that?
I, I'm okay. And I can check the exact number tomorrow. I just, if that's okay. Yeah. Because, you know, I don't want somebody else coming in and say, well, you approved 374. I, you know, I'm only asking for 376. You know? There's a difference there.
Okay, well, so if this is acceptable to the board, then we could fill, the intention is that we would fill in the square footage that would be permitted by right, and right now it's estimated to be, you said about 190 square feet, Michael? It's what you think?
Yeah, looking at their plans, the numbers there, but I, for now, until Derek gets the true numbers,
Yep.
as opposed to my best.
Yeah.
It's about 191 as of right, and like 183 sort of related to the variance above as of right.
Okay.
And that, just one more comment. Because the percent seems to me to be significant, it would be useful to have both the actual square footage and the percent of overage.
Yeah, the percent does appear
Yep.
down in the non-therefore at the bottom. And it also appears at the top of page two, where it gives maximum permitted existing and proposed percentages do appear.
Right.
And last comment on page two,
Yep.
number nine.
Yeah.
The very end of that section
Yeah.
Let's see, what is this? He appined to that the site could accommodate blah, 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 Floria ratio of 1%, I think per the record, per Derek, it was 1.1%.
Okay.
Karen, the difference between the existing FAR, which was 14.4%, and as of right was 5,161 is 206 feet, 206.80.
206, all right, so 206.80 square feet would have been permitted by right?
Right.
Okay. You can add that, if that's.
Okay. So the added over that was 167.2. Added over the 15% to come up to the 15.5.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Welcome.
We need a roll call.
Yeah, who moved approval?
Nobody moved. No one moved.
Okay, all right, then we do need, we need a motion and a second.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Claudia, please call a roll.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
That was a good addition, Michael. I think that was good that you added that in.
If things are so close, it's probably good to be as accurate as possible. Okay, we have three hearings tonight. The first one is case Z25-623, 728 Bun Drive, Block 2801, Lot 11, in the Office Research District, OR1 Zone. Derek, can you kind of give us?
Question, we did a roll call vote then, because I got a little distracted here for 254?
Yes, we did.
We did? Okay.
Yep.
Yep, I have it down.
We did both of them.
Yes.
So Derek, can you give us kind of a summary of where we were and where we're at at this point?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Let me just swear in, Mr. Bridger. Do you swear? Affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
The zoning board previously heard testimony on June 24 and July 30, 2025, regarding an appeal of the zoning officer's interpretation that a site plan application and conditional use authorization be submitted to the board to permit a drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility at 728 Bun Drive, which is the former location of the Princeton Care Center, a nursing and rehabilitation center. The board, after extensive testimony, upheld the zoning officer's interpretation at the July 30 meeting and waived the requirement of a site plan considering the testimony that had already been provided. The applicant had submitted a zoning variance, has submitted a zoning variance application requesting conditional use authorization and a conditional use variance pursuant to NJS 40:55D-70, Section 3. The conditional use requirements for a nursing home, as outlined in Section 10B 272.4A, require that a nursing home approvable as a conditional use must be a facility in a multifamily structure which is licensed by the Department of Health in accordance with NJAC 8:39. The licensing requirement for a drug and rehabilitation center requires a license pursuant to NJAC 10.16A et al. The two uses, while very similar, do have different licensing requirements from the State Department of Health. A variance from the conditional use is required pursuant to NJ40-55D-73. Conditional criteria is copied below, and I'm just going to go through that just for the record. Nursing homes and assisted living residents' conditional use requirements, A, a nursing home applicable or approvable as a conditional use must be a facility in a multifamily structure which is licensed by the Department of Health in accordance with NJAC 8.8:39 to provide health care under medical supervision and continuous nursing care for 24 or more consecutive hours to patients who do not require the degree in care of a treatment which a hospital provides and who, because of their physical and mental condition, require nursing home level care. So for purposes of this subdivision, nursing home care beds are approved beds in a nursing home which are available or used as for patients. The room in a nursing home in which one or two nursing care beds may be located are designated as nursing care units. And nursing home level care means care provided to individuals who have chronic mental conditions resulting in moderate to severe impairment, physical, behavioral, cognitive, and/or psychosocial functioning. It includes, but not limited to, partial or total assistance with living of daily, with activities of daily living assistance with self-administration or administration of medication and provision of treatments and periodic reassessments as directed by the patient's plan of care. It also provides the provision of physiotherapy, occupational therapy, therapeutic counseling, and other rehabilitation services as indicated by the patient's medical condition. It is a multifamily structure. It's considered a building containing 30 or more nursing care units with each sharing another one or units, or one or more vertical or horizontal common wall, and with each unit having its own separate entrance from an interior hallway or common area. We've been through most of that. It does meet that criteria, the main difference is the licensing requirement between the two conditional uses. I think the board discussed the two uses at the previous two meetings quite extensively, and we're here for the D3 to put the proofs on for the conditional use authorization, the variance specifically between the licensing agreement for a drug and alcohol rehabilitation center versus a nursing and rehabilitation center. So that's my synopsis on where we are today. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Board members, any questions to Mr. Bridger?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Ms. Casey, can you tell us where we left off last time on our last hearing?
Yes. At the last hearing, the board supported the zoning officer's interpretation. You then agreed to waive site plan approval based on the testimony and documentation which the applicant had provided to date. So at this point, as Derek's indicated, the applicant is now going to present their proofs for the D3 variance, meaning they need variance from the requirement of nursing home licensing by the state because very similar use, but they are a drug rehabilitation facility, not a nursing home. So it's a different license than that that a nursing home would get. So that is what the applicant's going to proceed with tonight.
Okay, and we did go through, I do remember we opened this up to the public for comment.
You did?
But we probably have to do it again after the.
You will, you will, because the applicant, although I suspect this may be some duplication of earlier testimony, they're presenting more information on the record, so you'll need to open it up again to public comment.
Very good. Okay. Board members, any questions of Ms. Casey or Mr. Bridger? Okay. Let's see, the applicant's attorney is here. Would you like to begin?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. For the record, Michael Lario from the firm of Nemat, Davis &amp; Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant, True Princeton LLC. This is property 728 Bun Drive, Block 2801, Lot 11. As was stated, this is a continuation of previous hearings on June 24, July 30. This was carried from last month's meeting. The original application was to appeal the zoning officer's determination and a request for a waiver of site plan review in connection with the establishment of a drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility at the subject site. Property, it's approximately 6.2 acres. It is improved with an approximately 64,000 square foot, three-story building that previously housed the Princeton Care Nursing Home that ceased operation in 2023, and the property has remained non-operational since then. That nursing home was a licensed healthcare facility under the New Jersey Healthcare Facilities Act. What the applicant is proposing is a licensed drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility, also licensed under New Jersey Healthcare Facilities Act. In the OR1, the Office of Research 1 Zone where the property is located, this has been determined to be a permitted conditional use. As was stated, though, one of the conditions pertains to the licensing that is required for nursing homes. Those are licensed under NJAC 8:39, whereas a drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility is licensed under 10:161. So there's different regulatory citations provided for in your ordinance. Because of that difference in regulatory citation, the zoning officer determined that a D3 variance was required. That determination was appealed. This board upheld that determination through testimony that was provided through Boca Recovery Center, the proposed operator of the site. Olivia Kononiyuk, the engineer, provided testimony as the existing site conditions, the fact that no improvements or expansion of the building was being proposed at the existing site improvements, parking, stormwater, sidewalk, drive aisles, et cetera, would be utilized. Additionally, there was testimony from Nicholas Kennedy, the traffic engineer, that the proposed drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility will not lead to any increased impact from a traffic standpoint. From a parking standpoint, it's been analyzed, and there's more than adequate parking spaces on site to meet the anticipated demand. In light of all that testimony, a waiver of site plan review was granted. However, as that zoning officer determination was upheld, the need for D3 variance relief was apparent. The board allowed the applicant to table the application, renotice, that was done in anticipation of this meeting, seeking the D3 variance relief. We are not proposing any additional factual testimony on the record this evening. It will really be limited to just the variance justification testimony from our professional planner, Mr. Andrew Janow. With that being said, all the witnesses who have previously testified are on this call and available in case there are any additional questions from any member of the board. What Mr. Janow will testify to is ultimately that this single deviation really will cause no substantial detriment to the public good, no detriment to the zone plan, to the zoning ordinance, that this site will remain appropriate. Really, the difference here is just a regulatory citation as to the license that's being issued. From a land use perspective, there's no quantifiable change between a facility like this healthcare facility license under, again, 8:39 or 10:161. And the operational testimony, the parking testimony that has been put on the record, spread out on the record over the previous two hearings, supports that determination. With all that being said, I do see Mr. Janow here. Ms. Casey, I know he was sworn in and qualified at a previous meeting. I think, should he, he should be qualified, excuse me, sworn in again. We certainly can put his qualifications back on the record if the board so requires it.
Mr. Janow, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And our chair, do you feel it's necessary to requalify him, or?
Did we hear from him previously?
Yes.
We don't have time against those.
You did originally hear from him, and he did present his qualifications, and the board did accept him.
Yes, and nothing's changed in terms of my licensure and good standing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Janow, you've been sworn in, you've been previously qualified. You've been in attendance for all the zoning board meetings that have taken place so far in connection with this application, and you've heard all the testimony provided so far into the record. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we are proposing a permitted conditional use at the subject site, a drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility. That is a permitted conditional use pursuant to the zoning officer. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and you at the July meeting went through the conditions associated with that proposed use and found, really, there's only one condition at issue. Can you speak a little bit to the conditions that are applicable to this proposed use?
Sure, Michael, I'd just like to start a little bit in terms of what was done in preparation, because this testimony has a little bit of a different criteria than the testimony that was previously set forth. So in preparation of this evening, we have reviewed your master plan, your ordinances, and we do need to reconcile the testimony tonight, not only with the conditional use standards, but also with, so as the negative criteria, meaning it's consistent with your zone plan and master plan, and won't create any significant detriment. With respect to that, and looking at your master plan, I found two pertinent points that support the application that's before you this evening, and those are within your principles, assumptions, policies, and standards. You cite as goals and objectives to maintain a balanced community that offers a mix of land uses while providing appropriately scaled infrastructure and services. We note that this application this evening adheres to the scale anticipated by the community, meaning the bed count, the criteria with respect to all the physical features of this property are within the zoning standards, and this facility was previously approved as a nursing home with actually a recognition that that was all met and integrated well into the community. Your master plan also cites using economic and employment growth to preserve the community's quality of life and services. Again, this application effectively revitalizes a facility that's been closed, will create opportunities within the community for employment, and will provide services and resources not only to the community, but to the region and to the overall population at large. So in terms of reconciling with your zoning plan and master plan, I do believe we enhance and further those two goals. As this board also knows, variances such as the one we'll discuss this evening aren't for the sole benefit of the applicant. There has to be a public purpose as well. Those public purposes are recited within the municipal land use law under 4055D2 as special reasons. Special reasons are cited by letter within that section of the MLUL as the public purposes that the board should consider in terms of granting a variance. And I believe there are three that are furthered by this application. The first is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of lands in the state in a manner which will promote the general public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. We are absolutely on point with that. Substance abuse treatment has been recognized as an inherently beneficial use in the state of New Jersey, meaning this application, while we're presenting it under the less stringent D3 standards for the use, is something that's conditionally permitted. The inherently beneficial designation would qualify this property under the more stringent D1 use variance requirements, given that it's recognized by the state as an inherently beneficial use. And that's because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare by definition. Other such uses besides hospitals, nursing homes, who include schools, childcare centers, group homes, and the like. So we are absolutely on point with providing something that promotes the general public health, safety, morals, and welfare. The second is to promote sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. Again, in our case, we have an existing facility that was previously approved and operated as a nursing home, albeit under a different license reference, but very much in the vein of that it'll be operated as a substance abuse facility treatment center as is presented before this board. This property will be easily adapted. There are no physical features to the exterior or to the site that are going to be altered with respect to this application. So in terms of something of a facility being an appropriate location, appropriate type of facility, we are on point with that. And then finally, M is to promote the coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessing the cost of such development to the more efficient use of land. But as I stated before, we have a vacant facility here that was licensed and used as a nursing home. It'll be used very much in a manner consistent with that prior use. And the only differential which we'll discuss now in terms of the D3 variance is the citation for the license under which it'll operate. And that brings us to the criteria for a D3 variance. So in the context of a D3 variance, we turn to the standards that's outlined in Coventry Square v. Westwood, not Medici, which is under the D1 variance. So under the D3 analysis, the issue is whether or not the property can accommodate the noted deviation. In this case, the deviation is the citation of licensure. Under this standard, we have to demonstrate that the deviation can be accommodated or that it does not create any detriments that cannot be mitigated. Essentially, it shifts the focus to the negative criteria and the impact of the deviation, meaning the license citation, upon the property. So when we look at this property and the specific requirements for the conditional use, A is that the use, the nursing home, is approvable as a conditional use and must be a facility in a multifamily structure. And it is, this qualifies under your definition of a multifamily structure, which is licensed by the Department of Health. And it does. That citation number from the Department of Health is 10.161, NJAC 10.161. However, under a nursing home, that citation would be NJAC 8:39, to provide health care under medical supervision and continuous nursing care for 24 or more consecutive hours to patients who do not require the degree of care and treatment which a hospital provides and who, because of their physical and mental condition, require nursing level care. In this case, what's being provided is in-residence treatment and recovery licensed by the Department of Health, operated with oversight identical to that under nursing care, meaning under the care of physicians and nurses, medical supervision, 24-hour medical supervision. And it does not require the care of a hospital, but does require the care that's very consistent and parallel to what would be in a nursing care. So when we look at the distinction here, and this is the sole distinction with respect to the D3 variance, it is the citation of the license. Both would be licensed under the Department of Health. Both would provide care under medical and nursing supervision. That care is provided on a 24-hour consecutive basis in a multifamily residence. It is strictly a matter of the citation as it falls under the licensure statutes for the DCA. The second criteria under the conditional use is that nursing level care will be provided, meaning the care will be provided to individuals who have chronic medical conditions resulting in moderate to severe impairment in physical, behavioral, cognit, cognitive, excuse me, and or psychosocial functioning. It includes, but is not limited to partial or total assistance with activities of daily living, assistance with self-administering or administration of medication and provision of treatments and periodic reassessments as directed by the patient's plan of care. It also includes the provision of physiotherapy, physiotherapy, occupational therapy, therapeutic counseling and other rehabilitative services as indicated by the patient's medical condition. So the care that will be provided to the patients in this facility will be consistent with the chronic medical condition resulting from severe to moderate impairment and a need of behavioral healthcare. These are patients that are fighting a substance abuse addiction. They will be getting care that's consistent with what was outlined in the second criteria. And that such care will consist with partial or total assistance with activities of daily living. It will include the provision of appropriate therapies and rehabilitative services. And there will be a medical condition plan for the patient's treatment. So again, it will function identically to nursing care. The issue is the, the type of patient that's there. The patient here isn't necessarily suffering suffering from a physical malady, but more so from an addiction that has been recognized to be a chronic condition and elevated to a specific tension of the state of New Jersey as being something equivalent in terms of a disability. And finally, three A is to a multifamily structure, must be housed in a multifamily structure. That's defined as a building containing thirty or more nursing care units with each unit sharing with another unit or units, one or more vertical or horizontal common walls, and with each unit having its own separate entrance and interior hallway. In our case, we will be providing one hundred and two beds in nursing care units in one and two bedroom configurations of nursing units. It'll be again consistent with what is anticipated by your criteria for multifamily living. It also cites that to qualify for conditional use, the applicant must demonstrate that the nursing home or assisted living residence has received or will be eligible to receive a license from the state of New Jersey Department of Health. That will be received and that will be provided. That the single facility may include both nursing, I'm sorry, this pertains to assisted living. And then finally, that its design of a site for the nursing home or assisted living center, the applicant shall attempt to achieve the integration of the preferred nursing home or assisted living center with the existing and proposed land uses adjacent to the site. Again, this property was approved for a nursing home in a previous application. In fact, the findings within that nineteen ninety-nine approval state, the board finds that the applicant has attempted to achieve an integration of the nursing home with the surrounding area. It will further be enhanced by the landscaping to be installed. The testimony that this use would be a good transitional use between the existing office uses to the north and east and the residential uses to the south and west have been found affirmatively. So again, this site and the configuration that will remain unchanged to the exterior has been found by Princeton's planning board, or sorry, that was the board of adjustment because that was a conditional use variance at the time, that it is consistent and has been integrated into the neighborhood. So when we look at your conditional use standards, the sole deviation is with respect to the license number. Operationally, it'll be exactly the same as a nursing home. And with that, when it's a function of just a license number, I don't see anything here that would result in any type of impact upon the neighborhood that would be negative. It'll function very much identically to the nursing home. It's been found to be able to be parked properly, to be able to be serviced properly within the area. It's in a zone where this conditional use is permitted. And there's been a finding that the nursing home and the treatment facility is essentially an identical type of use, but for this deviation and licensure number. I don't think the licensure number here has any significance relevance, relevant to the occupation or the operation of the property that would essentially create any type of impact that deviates from the impact of the prior nursing use. With that said, I think we qualify. I don't think we in any way deviate or have a negative impact on your zone plan. We're consistent with the goals and objectives in your master plan. So at, at looking at this, I think this property does qualify for the D three relief.
And under the Coventry Square standard that you mentioned, it will remain appropriate despite this minor deviation that you mentioned.
That's true.
Okay, and I would just note the license requirement that will obviously as a condition of any approval granted by this board be provided before operations commence at the subject site.
That's what I understand. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, those are all the questions I have for Mr. Janow.
Okay, I just have one question. Just to confirm the licensing requirements through the state for a drug rehabilitation center and the and the nursing home standards that we have are are the reporting and all the provisions of those licenses, both licenses similar? In other words, security and reporting and things like that.
So I think testimony's been provided that the the staffing requirements, that the security, the inspections that are required by the state for the continued licensing are all very similar between the nursing home use and the proposed drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility. Yes.
So very similar, but not necessarily exact in their wording, but similar in their requirement.
Sure, and I would say from an operational standpoint, from from a quantifiable impacts to the site, they are very similar. And by that, I mean the site is going to operate very similar from a nursing home to rehabilitation facility, given these requirements provided for by the state.
And I would add, under, under the supervision of the same agency, both, both are monitored and supervised by the New Jersey Department of Health.
Okay. Is that you, Justin?
No, that was Mr. Janow, I think.
Oh, that was Mr. Janow. Okay, good. Okay, sorry. Okay, that was my question. Board members, do you have any questions of the attorney or the witness? Okay. So I believe procedurally, we would, since there are no questions from the board, we heard the new testimony. We would open this up to the public after counsel has an opportunity just to sum up if he wants to. And then we'll open it up to public comment.
So all right with you, Mr. Chairman, could I reserve my summation following public comment, just in case there are any questions or issues raised during the public comment portion, I can address them in my summation.
Yeah, well, you'll have that opportunity anyway. You don't have to.
Then I'll, I'll reserve, reserve my summation till after public comment.
Okay. We're going to open this up. This is going to be the public portion of the meeting. Anyone who would like to speak on behalf of this application, just there is a oops, there is a a a button. God, I can't see it. On the bottom of your screen.
Raise your hand.
Raise your, you raise your hand and we'll recognize you and allow you to speak. Hey Claudia, how many people do we have? I see things flashing on the bottom of the screen.
Mr. Paul Reese is on. Sir, can you put your screen on?
And unmute your, unmute yourself, please.
Okay, I'm trying to put myself on, on video though. Okay, start video. There we go.
Great. Mr. Reese, if you're comfortable, can you give us your address?
Sure, it's twenty-five Campbell Woods Way.
Alrighty, and do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So Mr. Cohen, Ms. Casey Board, thank you for allowing me to speak. Again, my name is Paul Reese. I, I live at twenty-five Campbell Woods Way. It's the community that is adjacent to the, the facility. And at the last meeting that I attended, there was some testimony about security. And there were some, there was, there are some concerns raised about security. And I don't believe that those security questions were fully vetted, not or net or addressed. So I still have questions regarding, regarding the security, whether that there, there is adequate security and for the difference in the pop, patient population from a, a nursing home to a drug and rehab center. So that's my concern. I still, you know, I, I don't speak for the entire community, but anecdotally, you know, I've, I've spoken to many of my, my neighbors and we share, we share the concerns, the security concerns that that this, this, this facility would introduce to the community.
Okay, well, I think what we'll do is we'll hear all the public testimony. And I'll write down any of the questions and then when we finish the public, before we finish the the hearing prior to executive session, we'll allow the or require the applicant to answer those questions. Are there, do you have anything else, Mr. Reese?
No, but thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Claudia, do we have any others who'd like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Steve Hsu.
Oh, hi. This is Steve.
Mr. Joe, do you, could you give us your address, please, if you're comfortable doing that?
Sure, my address is twenty-six McComb Road.
McComb Road. And you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Hey. Give us your concerns.
Oh, cool. Thank you, everyone. So I, I think my major concern, I actually second to missed Mr. Paul Rice. I, I think my major concern is around the security of this facility because we live adjacent to this facility. And I, I think I, if I heard that correctly, that Mr. Andrew General, General, I'm sorry, if I didn't pronounce that correctly. He mentioned that it will be identical usage to, to the previous one in terms of those nursing home. But that actually raises some concerns from me because I don't really see them as identical. Bear with me if I didn't use my language appropriately, but you know, a nursing home sounds benign, whereas the a, a drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility sounds a little bit negative to me. And I really, I'm really concerned about the, the security around this area. More specifically speaking, this, I, I think this area, this is a residential area in the first place. And as far as I know, there are huge amounts, amounts of kids in this area. I'm not sure if anything can be enforced to make sure everyone's safely here. And you know, and we make sure that our kids are not exposed to anything negative. This is my primary concern and probably I have another, a different concern where I don't know how much impact that this will, I mean, this will influence, this will make, make influence on the, on market value of our houses here. Because again, again, forgive me if I, if I use language improperly, but as far as, as far as I can see, I, I think, I mean, drugs and alcoholic generally sounds, you know, a bad image. I'm not sure if everyone else feels the same, but at least for me, that's, that's the case. So I'm not sure if we will, you know, that this whole area will have a bad image to, to the general public's, I mean, outside of this area and negatively affecting the any, anything properties, environment in this area. I, I think those are my, those are my major concerns. And I'm not sure if the data have been, probably have been evaluated, but I, I think I want explanation on those.
Okay. All right, that is at the end of your questioning?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Claudia, do we have anyone? You're welcome. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak?
Yes, I think Lynn H.
Yes, hi, I'm Lynn Hambride. I live at six thirty-one Mount Lucas Road. So I'm actually directly behind the nursing home proposed rehab center. So I think the prior part, our community members had some very interesting and valid points with that. I'd like to bring up the part about the buffer. So in the past, the nursing home, to my understanding, actually leased the land. So one of my questions is, will that still be the case? And as a lessee of the land, I also understood that they were responsible for maintaining it and, you know, whatever, but some of those things actually never really happened. So while it was great that a buffer was put in place, it just hasn't been maintained over all of this time. And so my concern is certainly about the, you know, the new you know, new whatever, you know, rehab center and what your role would be with the buffer. And so along with just the landscape of the trees that are dead ash and things like that and noxious weeds, you know, there's always been light, you know, coming in from the nursing home for the parking. So I was curious about what, you know, if there's been anything new and different that you might recommend. Because it seems to me, as the prior speaker said, you know, the nursing home was quite benign in certain ways versus a more active population. And so we're used to not really seeing a whole lot of activity back there. And so certainly in the wintertime, you know, you can kind of see through there. And so I was wondering if you could address some of those things. And then one more thing, thank you, is that I think it might be helpful to recap what stage in recovery you're focused on with your building, since we have, you know, something not too far down the road as well, addressing a certain type of population as well. Thank you.
Now, could you just give us your address one more time? You said it was.
Sure, six thirty-one Mount Lucas Road, directly behind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, so that's the extent of your questioning.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem. Claudia, do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this application?
There are no more hands.
Okay, so hearing no more questions, we will close the public portion of the hearing and go back then to the applicant for the answer to these questions. I think I've got everything. So the first, the first one was security.
So it's all right, Mr. Chairman, I'd actually like to start with the last question asked and then work backwards because I think the last question I, I can answer as a question for the landscaping. What the applicant has agreed to at prior hearings is as part of the prior nursing home use, there was a landscaping plan that was reviewed and approved by the board. The applicant will agree to make whatever landscaping upgrades are necessary to bring the site in conformity with that prior approved landscaping plan. They will also have an obligation then to maintain that landscaping pursuant to that previously approved plan. So the applicant right now, they own the site, so they won't lease it. They're going to be the property owner, so they'll be bound to maintain that landscaping going forward once the site's operational. I think as to the security questions, Dr. Allison Tarlo, and I know we were posed with some of these questions at the, I believe, July meeting, but Dr. Tarlo, you spoke to it. I was hoping you could speak to it again once you are sworn in.
Sure.
Mrs. Tarlo, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Tarlo, you, you've been sworn in. Just as a quick refresher, can you explain your position and your role in this application?
Yes, I am a licensed clinical psychologist by trade. I'm licensed in a number of states across the United States, including New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Massachusetts and Florida, also Indiana. I am the chief clinical officer for Boca Recovery Center. We are a multi-state substance use disorder treatment facility. We focus on the treatment of substance use disorders at the medical detox and residential levels of care. And I can give you more information about what that means and what that looks like as, as needed.
Okay, so the, the question, one of the first questions pertained to a concern as to security. And obviously, this is something you're very experienced with, how these sites run day to day. Can you speak a little bit and address some of those concerns as to security for this site?
Yes, absolutely. I would be glad to. So the kind of facility that we are running is what we call a privately funded facility. Yes, absolutely. I would be glad to. So um the kind of facility that we are running is what we call a privately funded facility. So we operate for individuals who either have a private health insurance policy or they have the money, uh private financial uh situation that they can pay for treatment. This is not a state-run facility and we do not accept Medicaid or Medicare. Um and so therefore, when patients are seeking treatment with us, um there is a pretty uh substantial pre-assessment that we carry out to ensure that we can provide the right type of medical and clinical services based on what the individual is needing. So when they come into our care, they come in for what we call medical detox. And just to give you an idea, um people who are in medical detox usually stay at that level of care for anywhere from about five to ten days. On average, the uh typical length of stay at that level of care would be about seven or eight days. And during that seven or eight days, the patient is essentially in bed, um very tired, not feeling great. Um they may get up to get their medications, go back to bed, see the doctor, things of that nature. Not really doing a whole lot of moving around. In fact, they are medically not allowed to be running about or playing basketball or doing things of that nature, right? Because they are medically compromised in that state for, as I said, approximately the first seven or eight days. Then the patient may step down to what we call the residential level of care, where they um would on average, stay with us for another two weeks or so. So we're now talking about a total of about two to three weeks. And at that point, they're starting to feel a little bit more themselves again. So now they're able to come to the therapy office, engage in psychotherapy sessions, in group sessions, um come down to the cafeteria dining room area to eat some meals and meet with the doctor and go back to their room and lay in bed and watch their TV. So um these are people who are essentially not feeling that much better than somebody who might have just had a surgery. So they're not running around rampant and playing, you know, crazy games and hurdling fences. These are people who feel very unwell. If you could consider how you feel or felt on your worst day of having a flu, it would be akin to that. So this is not a raucous set of people. Furthermore, these are individuals who have um professions. We have doctors, we have lawyers, we have lots of people who work in unions. We have all kinds of government employees, postal service members. These are uh upstanding citizens and members of society who are in need of medical care because, for one reason or another, they developed some sort of addiction uh for a myriad of reasons. Um these are people who are not, we're not talking about school-aged children. We're not even talking about sort of college campus type situation. You're talking about, yes, there is an age limit. It's eighteen and up because by law, anything under the age of eighteen would have to be a specific adolescent facility, which this is not. The average range of age, I would say, is around forty years old. Um and again, these are individuals who come in with things like alcohol use disorder um or they had some sort of surgery and they developed an opioid use disorder. Um these are not individuals that need to be incarcerated because uh generally, those people who need to be incarcerated are going to be incarcerated and will not be able to come and hide out in our care. These are people, mothers and fathers, um children, in some instances grandchildren, who are in need of these medical services to feel better and be able to get well and get back to the jobs that oftentimes have agreed to allow them to get the help they need under the uh Family Medical Leave Act. So they come to us for treatment and then they go back from whence they came, which is their houses, their families, their jobs. So these are not a reckless bunch of individuals. I have been working in this field. Um I've been working with this company for eight years, but prior to that was with another company um for about four or five years. Um I'm not a particularly young person and I'm also not particularly old. And I can tell you that in the history of my time of working in substance use disorder treatment across multiple states in this country, I have never once seen any kind of aggressive act or violent act that was from any of um our patients towards people in any member of the community. And I would go further to say that if there was any indication that this person was going to escalate in our care, behind our closed doors, we would be making accommodations because they would not meet the criteria for the type of treatment that we provide. So for all those reasons, I can certainly understand as a mother of two children why you might have concerns about having a substance use disorder treatment uh facility in your, essentially your, what you see as your backyard. Um but I can assure you that uh working amongst this population day in and day out, um with a valuable life of my own, these are not dangerous individuals. These are not people that are walking around um with, you know, any kind of mental illness that would be of any sort of concern for the public at large. So that that's the first thing I would say about that. And then as far as the security and accommodation, um by law, in the state of New Jersey, we have to have a certain number of professionals in each department per the number of patients that we're caring for. So that means, for example, one registered nurse for every eight patients, one um licensed clinical therapist for every eight patients, um and X amount of behavioral health techs for every um number of patients. I believe that behavioral health techs may be one to fifteen. And I will tell you that we actually surpass that number just because when we are working with this type of person coming in for treatment, we want to ensure that they're getting the best possible care from our program because there are other programs that they could go to and we are providing a service.
So in your experience, there's not a security concern largely because from what I'm hearing, the individuals there, these disabled individuals have come to you seeking treatment for their illness, that they they're there under their own free will to receive treatment and to get better.
Correct. They are over the age of eighteen, so we don't have parents that are sort of forcing them to go. They are free to make that decision. And they've made that decision based on numerous phone calls and paperwork prior to even arriving um at our front door. So they are already well aware of what they are coming to. They have been spoken to already for assessments prior to coming in to make sure that they are appropriate for treatment and care and that we can provide what it is that they medically need.
Thank you, Dr. Tarlo.
Hi. Mister Lario, my notes show that I think it was the July thirtieth meeting where Dr. Tarlo actually went through, I guess, the specific security measures you have, and I didn't know she just wanted to highlight those again for the members of the public. And when I say that, I mean eh the ability of patients to leave the facility. Can they go for a walk? Uh do you have the TV cameras? Are things monitored? Maybe things of that nature.
Yes, absolutely. We have TV, we have monitors, we have cameras, both inside and outside the facility, in all the areas by law that we are allowed to have them. So for example, I don't know that it's the law in New Jersey to allow cameras into a toilet stall. Um but in all the other areas, particularly the community areas, and also in um the areas, the bedrooms, there are cameras. So we are, and it's being recorded um twenty-four seven, and we have access in all areas, as I said, inside and outside. Um generally, the facilities will have some sort of a border or gate or some sort of demarcation indicating where our facility ends and the rest of the world begins. So patients are usually brought outside with behavioral health tech staff for a cigarette um a certain number of times per day. Um in some facilities, we have um areas that are within our um boundary, like for example, with a basketball hoop and but only patients who are feeling well enough and are on that level of care would even be medically allowed to go and do something like that. As far as walking around and about, everybody is escorted for whatever visits there are. Every every door is locked with um key fobs, like those electronic key fob things that you hold up or there's pass codes on doors, so people cannot come and go freely. However, we are not a locked facility in that this is not prison. So if a patient wanted to leave, then we would fully expect them to express that to the team members who are on staff. And then multiple steps would be taken to address it with them and their family. Again, this is not a rambunctious, crazy crowd. This is someone who says, you know, I think I'm feeling better already, but they've been drinking for thirty years and now they've only got three years of detox under their belt. So they think they're feeling better and we know that, you know, they they probably need a couple more days to fully detox. So those, there are many steps in place. I I spend a large portion of my time training different, you know, staff members at various different facilities on how to address a patient who is ambivalent about whether or not they want to stay in treatment. Most of the time, what we are doing is we are treating these individuals and then we are securing for them what we call aftercare, where we arrange with another facility for transportation so that they are then moved somewhere else for a lower level of care where they're really being integrated into the community. But what we're talking about, the detox and residential levels of care that we're talking about at this particular location, that is not a um eh that is not the time at which a patient would be integrated into the community. The most integrated into the community that they're going to get is when they step outside to smoke a cigarette, however many feet away from the front door that the law says they need to be, and then they're going to come back inside.
And they'll be monitored by by a member of your staff at that time.
Or or numerous, or numerous members of staff, depending on how many people wanted to go out and smoke a cigarette. You know, because again, if there's, you know, ten people who want to have a cigarette, we're going to send, you know, one or two staff with them, and if there's twenty, they would need more. So the clients are never left unattended.
Yeah, is it appropriate for me to ask a question of uh of you at this time? All right, in the, yes.
Absolutely.
Miss Tarlo, yes. Um you mentioned uh the required ratios of staff to patients.
Mm-hmm.
At what time, what what is the these people in those ratios aren't there twenty-four seven, are they?
Yes, they have to be by law.
So over the course of the twenty-four hour period, all the, you know, one to eight patients, one to fifteen persons.
Yeah, so obviously, a clinical therapist is working what we would consider to be normal, our office hours, right? So the clinical therapist is one therapist to every eight patients. And that clinical therapist typically is coming in from eight to five or, you know, nine to six or something along those lines. And that's seven days a week that we have a clinical therapist on staff. We actually have numerous. Um but as far as behavioral health tech staff and nursing staff, by law, through the state of New Jersey, we are required at twenty-four hours a day to have the appropriate number, ratio of medical staff, which is the registered nurses, um to the uh number of patients. And the same with the behavioral health techs. And they are twenty-four seven because as a function of medical detox and residential care, there has to be medical staff, specifically registered nurses, not even LPNs, but registered nurses twenty-four hours a day. So yes, there is the same number. The only way that number goes down is because clinical therapists don't work twenty-four hours.
Well, it's pretty much everybody but the clinical therapist that are there all the time.
Correct. And and there is also the clinical therapist licensed person is going to be on call twenty-four seven. There's always going to be clinical therapists all available over the phone and nearby. Again, not not necessarily because of us, but because that is the law in the state of New Jersey. New Jersey probably has some of the most stringent laws when it comes to setting up any type of facility like this that I've seen. And I've worked on setting up facilities in a number of different states. New Jersey is by far the strictest. And as it should be, that's fine. You know, it's it's about everybody's well-being.
I have another question in terms of, you said obviously that one one of the residents, I'll call them residents, leaves the building to smoke or just go outside in the fresh air, there's a staff member with them.
All the time, absolutely, yes.
In your experience, have, do people tend to, and you can't limit where they walk, can you?
Um you can't limit where they walk, but essentially, again, it, we're not holding people there under duress. They are there because they want to get well and they want to get back to their families and their jobs and their lives. And, you know, as we're talking quite candidly here, I will tell you that the type of individuals who are seeking treatment at this type of facility are typically not going to be people that live under bridges. These are, again, professional individuals who have a problem with drugs or alcohol that they developed along the way and they're looking to seek treatment and get help so that they can go back to their jobs and their families. So people come of their own volition and they get well and then they leave, oftentimes continuing on at at treatment programs in other locations at lower levels of care, where they are now really riding a bus and going to meetings in town and stuff like that. The the individuals at this point in their recovery are largely feeling so rough that they don't really want to even get out of bed and eat a meal or take a shower. I mean, that's what we're really working on here. These are not bad people. They don't need ankle monitors, they need supervision. And listen, I get it, I get it. Like, I grew up in a place in London and my family, you know, eh I didn't know from addiction prior to going to graduate school and getting a doctorate degree and doing this for the number of years I have. But I, it it's really astounding the difference between what people's fears are versus what the reality is of individuals like this who are seeking treatment to get well. They are not looking to rob houses, they're not looking to, you know, steal copper pipes. It it's just, it's just not that. That's probably something that you're going to see on, you know, a gritty New York City Law and Order, but it's not this. I, it really isn't. I wouldn't go to work every day in that environment if I thought that it was a dangerous place. So, anyway.
Okay, um is that, that's the end of your testimony?
If you would like it to be, yes.
Okay, um so I think we've talked about, obviously, security. Uh we've gone through that. We talked about the uh the landscaping and buffering and things like that. And anything, by the way, the landscaping would be landscaping throughout, including any of the buffer zones, I assume.
Correct, yes. All that is shown on the previously approved landscaping plan that we'll be found by.
Fine. So the only question that wasn't answered, and I don't know if it can be answered, quite frankly, is is the market value question. I don't know if anybody, if you feel you can speak to that or if you'd like to speak to that. That's not a a criteria in our approval process. Um but do you want to say anything about that?
So it it's certainly not a land use consideration that should be taken by this board in weighing their determination. Um I'm not familiar with any reduction that's being alleged here. Um but again, ultimately, uh it's outside the scope of what this board needs to consider in the application before it.
Okay.
I mean, Steve, Steve, there are many applications that come before the land use boards in Princeton. And the neighbors next to them could, and I'm sure, think that it will affect their property value. But as Mister Lario pointed out, that's not a consideration for this board.
I know, I know, I know that. I've been involved in hearings and that that comes up and and but so, but one of the residents, one of the neighbors did mention it, so I wanted to mention it here. So I think we've covered all the questions that came up in the uh public portion of the hearing. So I guess we'll move on now.
Uh excuse me?
Yes.
Um so um uh thanks for your time. I just want to say that uh i- if if the if the market value question is, you know, if the market value is not part of the consideration, that's fine. Um but can I have a follow-up question on that smoking scenario? Do I still have the chance to say something?
Yeah, you can. I mean, we'll, we'll, you know, I don't want to open it up to general questions again, but please, ask your question.
Okay, thank you very much. So uh I think I think my question is that if there is, uh if there is no limit uh on how far um the patients can go outside and smoke, um that actually raised some concerns to me because, you know, uh practically speaking, there is a park there, which which is called Hilltop Park. I um um I think that most people should know that. And again, a lot of kids play there. And there, so far, I I have been living in this place for almost like two years. And not a single time did I notice anyone smoking there in or around this area. So my major concern is that it's So my major concern is that, let's think of the this scenario. If uh, if some patients go too far to this place and they smoke, then I don't think that sets good examples for for our kids, maybe. Or generally speaking, it's it's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, smoking is never a good thing, Mr. Zhao. And what I would also say to that is I never said that they're free to roam. So we do have uh, boundaries around what is our property. And typically what we will do is set up picnic table type area, usually a covered tent or some sort of gazebo area. And I would go further to say that with your beautiful weather in New Jersey, come rain or shine, they would definitely be in a specific area that is owned by the company on our property where our staff can also sit and monitor them, where we also have those uh, large, uh, what do you call them, like ash, smokeless ashtrays, whatever those things are, I'm not a smoker. Um, and also I would say that a large number of people um, have moved away from smoking cigarettes and smoked vapes now. Um, and I would also say unfortunately, um, it's something that I see kids doing all through middle school and high school, both as a parent and as a psychologist. So the most important thing that I would want to assure you is by no means are our patients um, allowed or encouraged to wander off the property into any outside areas or park areas. They are kept inside to one specific area in that there's no need for them to walk further. They don't want to go further, they just wanna go outside, get a little bit of their nicotine and go back inside again. So there's not a, it's not like a free roam by any stretch. It would be a couple of meters away from our back door or whatever door it is from our property that's closest to the smoking area. And there would be a gazebo there, as I said, with uh, amenities like park, a little picnic bench area for them to sit for the five minutes that they sit out there to smoke their cigarette. Then they have to come back inside for group. That they are actually there attending groups, attending um, doctor's appointments, attending psychotherapy sessions with our professional licensed staff that are inside that building working there. So the patient, it's it's not like a, it's not like recess, you know, go outside for forty minutes and come back when you're when you're ready. It's it's go out, have a cigarette with staff for five minutes and then come back in and get back to whatever it is that you need to be doing or get back into bed and go rest.
Well, you could set up these, you're welcome, you could set up these gazebos or tables, whatever, in areas not close, not closer to the park.
Yes, and furthermore, these are individuals that don't necessarily want to be look looked at by anybody. Uh, they've already been stigmatized so much. The last thing they want are park bench school children pointing at them. Or um, also we have HIPAA requirements where confidentiality is of utmost importance. So these are areas that generally are behind some bushes. We get some, we've we've got beautiful like white uh, panel wood gazebo types settings um, that look aesthetically very nice and again, serve the purpose for them to go outside. And and for some people, it is just a fresh air break. They just wanna walk outside, get some fresh air and go back in. But no, they do not leave the perimeter, they certainly don't walk into public areas, they're not gonna go to any parks. That would not be beneficial to any part of their treatment or recovery at that point.
No, I didn't imply they were going to go to the park, I just was.
No, I know you weren't, I know you weren't, but I think the neighbors might be concerned of that. And again, I I I understand that, I I understand the all the fears and concerns. Um, eh, if you ever get an opportunity to take a tour of a facility like this, you would see in that type of operation that it is um, it it's it's not an insane asylum and people are there of their own free will. And these are individuals who are really no different than you or I, who are just there for two or three weeks to get some help with an addiction, which is a medical illness, just like somebody might go to treatment for, you know, cancer or diabetes or anything like that. They have an illness, they have an addiction, they're getting help. And and they, and that's why they're there. And and some of them are paying good money to be there, one way or the other. It's not a cheap outing.
Okay, thank you. So I think it seemed to me that you've answered, at least to the extent you can, that question. So at this point, if there are no board member questions, um, we'll conclude the public portion of the, did you wanna say something? Um, I thought, Bernice, Bernice, did you raise your hand?
I I I did, but I I mean, I can do it during our board discussion too, if if, yeah, that's fine.
Do that. So um, at this point, we'll close the public.
Steve, I have a question. And it's it's a a general overview operational question, maybe Mr. Lario. Um, I was, I was wondering, um, if there's been any discussion um, of between Boca and the property owner of Boca only needing part of the facility? And any discussion, and and you haven't stated that there has been, so I just wanna check of of it becoming a partial nursing home use too.
Not that, not that I'm aware of, Mr. Floyd.
Okay, cuz this seems to be a somewhat larger facility regarding rehab. But if uh, Boca feels they can fi- fill it up, um, then then great, um, you know.
Certainly, I'm sorry, dinner off.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, if anything were to change, we'd have to come back to this board. I mean, ultimately, what we're proposing, we're bound by that number. But I'm not aware of a- of any proposed changes, what you're talking about, to have a nursing home.
Okay, um, I I was just just wondering what the the amount of turnover, so that's that's good. Um, I just wanna check the accuracy, um, that you will, if if you wanted to change the use back, that it's, um, you have to come back, is that correct? Uh, Derek, or does the nursing home approval survive?
Uh, that's a good question, uh, yes.
Are you saying, Michael, it could be you you are concerned about the potential for a dual use? Part of the facility is nursing?
Well, if there's a dual use, then I would definitely say it has to to come back.
Um, okay.
The uses are very similar, as we've discussed here. I don't know, Karen, you know, use, a variance runs with the land, but once it's a different, technically different D three use here, then the drug and rehab versus the nursing home, um, would the nursing home approval still stand if? I I don't know, I mean.
And that's.
Well, I mean, I certainly think. Yeah.
Is that Karen?
I was gonna say, I certainly think uh, a decent argument could be made that the if a future owner decided they wanted to have a nursing home there, as long as the ordinances remain the same.
Yeah.
It's it's a permitted conditional use, so.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I I know of some facilities in doing some research where that's exactly, not exactly what happened. They they went for the rehab use only for a portion of their building and they kept her nursing home use. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't planned or discussed here.
I don't think that the applicant has testified that there is even that potential and they've always, they've been saying that this is.
I realize that, that's why, I just wanted to ask the question.
No, it's a valid question, sure.
Cuz achieving eighty percent stabilized occupancy just with people staying only, you know, twenty-five to twenty-eight days is is a good lift.
Okay.
Okay, fine.
All right, so so at this point, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. And Mr. Lario, do you wanna say anything before we go into executive session?
Mr. Schreiber.
Wait.
Steve Schreiber.
Steven?
You're muted, Steven.
I'm, Steven Schreiber is muted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he is. Mr. Lario, were you asking, were you?
I I saw Mr. Schreiber raising his hand, that's all I was saying, Mr. Chairman.
And it it doesn't look like he's muted in terms of, I don't see him muted, you know, a little red thing in the bottom.
No, he had turned it on and I saw the red icon come up just right there. I think his computer's having an issue.
Okay.
All right, so, um, so again, Mr. Lario, do you wanna sum up at this point before we go into executive session?
Sure. So again, board members, I I first just wanna thank you for your your time and attention. I know this has been a lot of testimony put on the record over many, many hearings. Um, what we're talking about here is a proposed use that has already been determined to be a permitted conditional use within this zone. Um, the applicant has, based upon your determination, upholding the zoning officer's determination, is seeking uh, one deviation from that conditional use standard, specifically in connection with the licensing requirement for this proposed facility. Um, again, both the nursing home that was previously there, the proposed licensed drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility, twenty-four seven care, fully licensed by the Department of Health. Um, all other conditions contained within your ordinance are satisfied. Um, the testimony put on the record, the operational testimony, the traffic testimony, the parking testimony, all showed that this site is particularly suitable um, for this nursing, excuse me, for this proposed drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility. And and again, that's no coincidence there. The reason for that is the almost identical nature of the nursing home use and the proposed drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility. Um, we are notably proposing a reduction in the bed count from one hundred and nineteen to one hundred and two. Um, based upon all of this testimony as to the onsite operation, a waiver of site plan review was previously unanimously granted by this board. So the final matter is ultimately this D three variance relief. From a land use perspective, as the testimony from Mr. Janow um, shows, we believe there's no quantifiable difference between uh, a facility licensed under eight colon thirty-nine versus a facility licensed under ten colon one six one. That operationally, they're going to be almost identical. The site will remain appropriate, given this deviation. Um, they're both required to to obtain the license, maintain the license, the inspections, everything that goes with it. Um, it'll continue to look and operate the same nursing home use that has existed on this site for for many years. Um, if anything, it will be improved in the sense that uh, the landscaping plan that was originally proposed and approved, the applicant will update the landscaping to meet that. Um, maintenance of the building, upkeep to the building, it's gonna refresh this site in a way that it will turn it into a productive use within your community. At the beginning of all of this, I did mention that there are federal laws implicated here. The Federal Fair Housing Act, the Americans with Disabilities Act are implicated, given the fact that we're talking about disabled class of individuals. Those in recovery from drug and alcohol addiction have been designated disabled under federal law. What that requires is that this board make reasonable accommodations for their residency, for their housing, for services, for those disabled class of individuals, reasonable accommodations. And we believe, based on the testimony provided, uh, it is reasonable to allow this vacant, underutilized building within your community to be ref- refreshed, brought back into service, allowed to be utilized as it was originally designed uh, for a healthcare facility to serve this disabled class of individuals in your community. Uh, the applicant, they they own this property now, they've owned it for um, close to a year now. They're excited to to commence operations on the site, to begin making improvements to the site, to get this site up and running. Um, again, we thank you for your time and attention this evening. If there's any additional questions or concerns from me or any member of the applicant's development team, we're happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, board members, um, we're in executive session now, so does anybody wanna ask anything, make any statements? Um, have a discussion on any aspect, Bernice, please?
Yeah, I I just wanted to understand, since there's been a a bunch of discussion about the um, the landscaping that didn't happen. Uh, was, di- did that original plan include much um, planting around the perimeter? The only fencing I see on the on the site plan we have is on the west side. So just wanted to understand what is in that plan because I don't, uh, we were not given that landscaping plan.
Derek, do we have a copy of that landscaping plan? The original one?
Not not readily accessible, um.
You do, I mean, you did get a copy of the nineteen ninety-nine uh, planning approval, and I'm actually looking through it to see.
Yeah, I don't see any, I mean, I see walks and paving and.
I'm I'm reading from now, the nineteen ninety-nine resolution. The applicant has proposed a landscape plan consisting of screen plantings along the perimeter of the property, smaller landscaping around the foundation of the proposed building, building entrance and entrance at Bond Drive. Uh, it references Stan Dobremilsky, uh, his landscape architecture report. Um, let's see.
Mr. Lario, do you have?
Preserve, preserve woodland, maximize separation from the residential neighborhood. They were gonna provide deed restrictions to preserve the land buffers around the southern side of the facility in their natural and undeveloped state. Uh, okay.
Excuse me one second, Karen. Mr. Lario, do you have a copy of that plan?
I do recall seeing a copy of the prior landscaping plan. I think, Mr. Bridger, when we were exchanging emails back and forth, for some reason, I I do recall seeing that. I I don't have it readily available right now, but um.
Could you get a copy of that plan and give it to Mr. Bridger and our attorney? So we can, we can reference it in the approval?
So Steve, I mean, it, there is a, I don't have the exact sheet number, but there is a whole site plan, it's just filed away, um. And it, I could try to find it online, but there's like thousands of pages in that that uh, file, so it takes a while.
Well, and I just wanna make sure that we have, that if there is a question on the landscaping, that we know what the criteria is for the maintenance of that, or what it has to be and what needs to be maintained.
Yeah, what I was gonna suggest is, if the applicant's agreeable, is typically something like this would be done as a site plan. And obviously, we've waived the site plan, but there is an administrative waiver of site plan that's done by the engineer on the planner and myself. Uh, we could review it, um, it's minimal cost, the escrow is five hundred dollars, um. The application fee is four hundred and twenty-five dollars, I believe. Um, so if if they're agreeable to that, um, to just review the the plan that was approved back when the nursing home opened and what they're gonna uh, propose to to make any uh, improvements to that or cor- correct any deficiencies.
Yeah, we have no objection.
Okay, good, so we'll include that, okay? Um.
Along the same lines, I guess, the the one hundred and two bed count's a little different than where you started out at. So if that could be incorporated into the same document, just a floor plan that would show the number of uh, beds in the facility, then that could be a condition of approval. Um, and it usually takes a couple of weeks to to finish that up, so.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank, was there anything else, Bernice?
Um, no.
Steve, can you hear me yet?
Yeah, we can.
Yes.
I have a, I have a question, I have a question going back to the public hearing, if I could ask it.
Please.
Uh, one of the members of the public raised the question about lighting. And I I I think uh, I'd like to know what the lighting, parking lot lighting plan is. Cuz I agree that, you know, if there are bright lights and they shine into a neighbor's house, that that ought to be addressed.
I agree with you, and it should be if if the original lighting plan um, is somewhere, if the site drawings are available. Derek, is that something you uh, can look at?
Yeah, I mean, we're 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 kind of uh, you know, controlled by that original site plan.
Right.
So uh, yeah, we can, we can look at that. Um, I, I mean, I just looked at an aerial photo, it's hard to tell now cuz there's still leaves on the trees. But there is a lot of uh, distance between, you know, there's a lot of woods around the property, it's just a matter, maybe they need some under story plantings or something like that. But and we're, staff is happy to meet onsite with the applicant.
I I I was just just to add, the applicant has no problem working with the staff here. If there's any type of light coverings to minimize any potential light spill drawn to adjacent properties, um, we're happy to add that to existing lights. But obviously, what was previously approved for that parking lot, we plan to just utilize it in connection with our proposal.
That that's what we're asking for, just what's been approved.
Yep.
Okay, right. Okay, um, does that cover it, Stephen?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome. Uh, any other questions, board members? Okay. Okay, well, at this point, does someone want to make a motion?
Before somebody makes a motion, I, there were a couple of things I jotted down as possible conditions. So would you like me to go through that? And then if somebody wants to make a motion, they, they can reference those as conditions?
Please.
Okay. So the applicant has indicated, they've amended the application a little bit. It will be now a 102-bed facility. Uh, they've indicated they will, are willing to comply with all other conditions of the 1999 planning board approval. They've indicated their willingness to apply for administrative site plan waiver, which would allow staff to, I guess, review that, the existing plans, just to again confirm what's needed for the landscaping as it was approved in 1999. Same thing with the lighting. They have advised that they will get their required license from the State Department of Health before opening. There has been a lot of testimony about the facility's security. We can call that out in a condition if you want, but there's been general testimony about many aspects, so. I wasn't, I wasn't planning on doing that in the resolution, but if you want that called out specifically.
I think, I think since it's a question from the neighbors, I think it should be in there.
All right. And, um, basically what Dr. Tarlo has indicated is that patients are monitored all the time in accordance with applicable law. Since many are receiving, of all of them, it's, are receiving medical treatment at some level. They have facilities that have, they have cameras, their doors are wired. Patients are allowed to go outside on their grounds when accompanied by a staff member, if they want a little break or they would like to smoke a cigarette. Otherwise, they are not allowed, even though it's not a secured or a locked facility. If they want to leave or they want to go off the grounds, then, you know, the, they would need to consult with the staff about, you know, what the rules are and that they need to stay at the facility for treatment. I don't think, but the applicant previously indicated they would, of course, comply with these own requirements for parking. And if for some reason they can not comply with that, they would come back to the board for further approval. So other than that, I don't have anything. Is there anything, Derek, that you wanted to add as condition or?
No, I think you've got everything, Karen. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, board members, does someone want to make a motion? Yes, Michael? Are you raising, you're not raising your hand?
No, I was just holding my chin, but I will, uh, this along and, uh, I move approval of the D3 for conditional use authorization to permit all the operation of drug and alcohol rehab facility.
Thank you.
Subject to the conditions as Karen listed.
I'd, I will second that.
You either. Okay, is there, board members, any question on the motion? And you understand what, you know, they, you know, Karen's going to put into it for conditions? Okay. All right, no, no questions. Claudia, can you please call the rule?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
No.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, uh, I wish you luck and, um, it's, it's something that's unfortunately needed. And, um, so, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just, again, I want to thank you for your patience over the many months this application took. And again, on behalf of the applicant, we thank you. Hope everyone has a nice night.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, board members. Okay. Moving right along. Our next case, does anybody want to take a break now or do we want to just keep moving?
We take a quick break, please.
Okay. No, please. Okay. Hang on one second, Stephen. It's 9:07. We'll take five minutes, so we'll be, uh, 9:09:12. Okay?
Okay. Karen, I, I want to ask you a question. Go on, never mind.
No, we can, you, you want to, oh, Karen left.
No, no, I'm here. Just a minute.
Okay, you want to?
And just a quick question. Why do you ask, uh, people who want to speak if they're comfortable giving their addresses? Don't they have to live in Princeton?
Well, no, no, what, what, um, what we've been trying to do now is, at a minimum, just let us know you live in Princeton. Some people may not be comfortable. They don't want to give, because remember, we're taped, we're on YouTube, so they prefer, they may just say, I want, I live on X street. That's what I'll say, or I live in Princeton. And the idea being that if they live in Princeton, then you may give their concerns higher. I'd, I'd say higher consideration.
It seems like we have their name, the, the name shows up, so.
I know, I know, I know, but, um, you'd be surprised. Some people would prefer not. If they live next door, they're usually willing, because they want to emphasize they live next door to the property. So their comment, uh,
I don't think we've ever had anybody not give their address, but.
I, I have had in other towns, people be very reluctant and just say, well, could I just say I live on the street? Or could I just say I live in town? I prefer not to say where I live, so that's why.
Okay.
We've been asking people that. Okay.
Harlan, did you say yes or no to the vote?
I said no.
Okay, that's what I thought. You were the only no, right?
I was the only no.
You wasn't no.
I'm still a no.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, it's, um, it's 9:12. As soon as Karen is back, I think everybody else is here. Claudia, you're here. I'm recording. Are we still recording?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Karen, you're here? Okay, we're back in session. Uh, we're going to go to our next case, which is case number Z25.
Oh, Mr. Chairman? Oh, never mind. Mr. Schreiber is back now. He wasn't there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you're muted, Stephen. Our next case is Z25-653-164 Prospect Avenue, Block 55.01, Lot 16, in the R2B Zone. This is a continuation of the hearing previously held at our last meeting. Uh, I was absent then, but I've listened to the tape and provided the certification to our attorney and board secretary. So, um, who's going, Mr. Bio, are you going to start this?
I can. Uh, thank you for listening to the tape and thank you for being present to opine tonight. Are any other members of the board able to do the same, um, to describe if they're able to vote, so we, we have a count?
Well, how many, how many weren't present at the last hearing? I don't know, other than myself. Deanna, did you listen to the tape?
Donna, yes.
Donna did.
Donna, I'm sorry.
And. Deanna's nice. Yes, I did.
I also did.
David Dopkin did.
Yes.
Provided the certification?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and you did, Steve, so.
I did, yes.
Everyone else was present on September 24th.
That's great. Thank you, board, for, uh, giving us that information.
Okay.
I'll jump right in. The purpose of our application is to allow the construction of a covered porch over an existing patio on a fairly newly constructed home on Prospect Avenue. During the last meeting, we had heard concerns of some of the board members as well as the, uh, public. Those concerns varied from issues of privacy, in the case of an adjacent neighbor, to others which, um, sought that the board uphold the floor area ratio standards, uh, under all conditions because of, uh, that's the law, that's the zoning ordinance. We went back, we heard some of those comments, and we have since modified our application. In the following order, the modifications include the elimination of the second floor use of the covered porch. It is now just a roof. We have eliminated the sauna completely. We have lowered the chimney of the fireplace, since we no longer had to exhaust the vapors above, three feet above, whatever's up there. The chimney got lowered. We have shrunken the size of the first floor covered porch as well. We, we narrowed our structure by a foot. And we have reduced our requested floor area ratio by 83 square feet to 4861, whereas the previous application was 4944. I, I want to note that that previous application of 4944 included additional areas, uh, didn't include areas that Derek Bridger and I spoke about, but our reduction is 83. So our, um, our application seeks 31.7, whereas 30% is the maximum allowed. That, okay, and we have raised the wall of the, uh, right side of the structure facing a concerning neighbor uh, from two feet to four feet. So the screens that make up the, the, the covered porch are now starting at four feet up. And we did that because of concerns that we felt were legitimate. If conversation and use could, could be masked a little bit higher, that, that buffer would, would, would help. Um, so we, that, that was a, the sixth element of what we did. I now want to, uh, share a screen, and the purpose of this is to allow me to show, um, um, things that I think are relevant for your deliberation. Uh, so let me, give me a second here, so I can figure out how to share a screen. Okay, there's the share. And here's the screen. Okay. So, um, I'm sharing my screen. Does everyone see this?
Yes, now we do.
Okay, um, I'm going to note that the covered porch sits squarely in the center of the property. We have a 38-point, uh, 38-foot, three and a half inch buffer to the neighboring property line. Uh, and this is concerning, because the neighbor is, was, was concerned with the application. In addition to that particular piece of information, I want to point out this Google map that I'm now sharing. This Google map shows that we're, we're constructing our porch, which is right here, about the center of our property. The nearest adjacent similar use, which would be an open patio, is 64.73 feet away. So it, it's quite a buffer. Um, it's, it's larger than the one that exists between the other neighboring home, which really had nothing to say, uh, and the neighbor who was concerned about this. I think the elimination of any second floor use and the knowledge that we're 65 feet away, which is closer than the street is to the front of the home, is important. Because, um, and let me go to a picture now, because the.
Mr. Bio, do you want these to be exhibits? I know last time you weren't able to share your screen. Do you want these now to be, uh?
I do. Okay, so the first exhibit is non-exhibit. This is a, this is a reference to existing plans that were submitted to you as part of the application.
All right, do you know what plan, can you tell me what plan that is and we'll make that?
Sure. The first one I'm pointing to is the cover sheet C1, and I specifically referenced what I'm circling here, which is the distance of our covered porch to the property line.
All right, so we'll make that A1, and then you had your Google map?
Yeah, the second exhibit is a, uh, Google map reference indicating the distances between two similar uses, our covered porch and an unenclosed patio of an adjacent property.
Okay.
And the next exhibit, um, just don't mind me while I'm pulling it up, um, is going to be a photo, which I took of the rear yard, uh, toward the, the neighboring property, which illustrates, um, sort of the, what's between us. Um, and as soon as this loads, I'm sorry, it's taking this. I had it loaded and I closed the window by accident. Um, just a few more seconds. Come on. All right, well, while that's loading, I'll come back and I'll, I'll go to the, the floor plan. Um, so on the floor plan, um, which I'm now referencing A1, sheet A1, the proposed rear-raised covered porch, you could see where I'm circling here, that we brought the screen porch in from the alignment with the side yard by a foot. While it sounds petty, what's 12 inches, understand that we have an outdoor bar area, for lack of a better term, it's a countertop, that is 24 inches deep. And on the other side, we have a door, which is three foot wide, which swings open. The net usable area between the bar and the edges of where the door restricts our placement is 12 feet, 6 inches. Um, a very tight, I would call it small area, um, and, but it illustrates the owner's intent to really make an impact, to really bring this thing down to the bare minimum, and this was an intentional, um, uh, move to, to downsize our own porch, not just eliminating its second use, but to physically downsize it. I'm going to go back and see if my photos have now loaded. They have, and I'm going to bring that image up. So the picture I'm about to show on the screen is going to illustrate the, the adjacent property and the distance. Now, this is, this is a picture taken from where our, our current patio is, approximately three feet in from the edge of the house, toward the neighboring property, where they have, uh, they have been approved for an existing, for, I'm sorry, for a new covered porch. When they did their house, they, 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 they were within the limits to build that, uh, and the patio is behind this fence. And that distance that I showed earlier of 64 feet was measured from where our covered porch is going to be, or our current open patio, to that porch. This is important to understand, because we are. This is important to understand because we are in the process of, Mr. Peepsack has planted these green giants, which are fast growing, and are going to produce a a privacy hedge within a few years. In addition to that, the adjacent neighbor has a fence that already is up here that is six foot tall, which gives him some measure of privacy. Between these two and the distance we are from the covered porch, we feel that this board should understand that it's it's pretty, pretty buffered. Without a covered porch, the peepsacks would be left using their rear yard in a in a compliant way. They have an open patio. And he wants a fire pit, so he wouldn't have the fireplace. But would a fire pit be better than having a fireplace in a covered controlled zone? They they love to sit outdoors. They they want an outdoor TV. Would it not be better to have an outdoor TV under a covered roof? And I'm going to now go to my drawing, in my drawing A, A two, which shows the proposed one story covered porch. This is the side facing our side of the patio, so you have the chimney, and the television would be situated right here, aimed back at the house with with the wall facing the adjacent neighbor now being raised. Let me just find where I put that, to here, to four feet. So this is the floor of the covered porch, and this is the raised wall with the screens above it. So we do have the degree of transparency of sound and and wind and air, but we have buffered it so that when you're sitting down and enjoying company, the four foot would would really materially help in that buffering. So I thought that this exhibit really spoke to that. And so, you know what? Karen, I did not mark these exhibits. Are you marking them as?
I am marking them as we go along.
All right, so I've entered two exhibits. Thank you. I'm sorry for losing my train of thought. So without a covered porch here, what do we have? We have a a family that wants to use their backyard. They have a very open patio, which is very hot in summer. They would have a fire pit. They would have a TV, probably, I don't even know, but he has an ability to broadcast it on a section of the house. We have lights in an unshielded, uncontrolled manner, and we have sound, which is regulated and and directed into our covered, covered porch. An open patio is certainly permitted, but a covered section of it, while part of the floor area ratio calculation definition, it's really not, you know, it's not a house, it's an outdoor room. I think it's a betterment to the public, and I think it speaks directly to M L U L forty point five five D two, which speaks to the welfare, the welfare of the property in a residential setting, and how this is not diminishing from that welfare, if anything, without the aesthetic consideration, it's improving the detriment to the public of having controlled entertainment, controlled light, controlled sound, and controlled fire, allowing for an amenable use for the peepsacks. You know, just in closing, we are, we we really have struggled to try to get this outdoor patio better used for them. They're an older couple. They would really love to have this outdoor entertaining area, and your board would not be detrimenting the public based on my testimony regarding the welfare and the controlled containment of some outdoor uses, which is is clearly better here. We've reduced the usable sitting area. We've tried to lower the chimney. We've taken away the second floor deck uses and the sauna. This is in the rear yard of the property. We urge you to strongly consider the points we've made and see favorability onto this application. That's it. Thank you.
Hey. That concludes the testimony right now.
It does.
Okay, so I'd like to just, before I open this up to the board, I'd just like to ask a question. On your, on your memo that you submitted dated October tenth, you say that the allowable, the allowable floor area ratio for the property is forty five ninety nine. That's item number five.
Yes.
The revised area of the, of the overall property now is now forty eight sixty one.
Our proposal, yes.
Yes. So the question I have is how much, you have two situations here. You're allowed to, you're allowed to build more than you currently have, not than you currently propose. But you're, you're allowed to build more than you currently have.
No.
And, no?
That's not true.
No.
I wrote a memo.
We are at the limit. This, the home builder who built the home prior to the purchase from the peepsacks, pretty much maxed out the floor area ratio without consideration for any new amenities space like an outdoor covered porch. The ordinance specifically categorizes a covered outdoor porch as part of the floor area ratio, and therefore, any approval from your board would be by by variance.
Okay, so the whole house is, the whole house existing is the forty five ninety nine?
That is correct. That includes some other areas of the house that are outdoors, but that's the ordinance has this.
Okay, so the entire, then I, I was mistaken then. So the entire, the entire porch is a variance?
That's correct. Any, any allowance to cover an outdoor patio is a variance on this particular property.
Just wanted the clarification. Mr. Bio, did you say then that the F A R you're proposing is thirty one point seven percent?
Yeah, let me, I'll I'll check that calculation.
Because Derek, your memo says it would be thirty two point five percent.
Yeah, and I laid out all the numbers. I would read my memo into the record, but.
Oh, Derek, you called me and you said you dis, you had earlier disallowed something to be removed from the F A R, but in your review, you now added it back in. Is that correct?
There was an exemption taken for open porches, and the reason we're here is that this is not an open porch. So you were taking part of our two hundred square foot deduction for an open porch when this is not an open porch. So there is no exclusion permitted for this porch. So the way I looked at it was the original plan proposed a four hundred and twenty five square foot enclosed porch that included a fireplace with a rooftop deck containing a seventy square foot sauna. The total proposed F A R was four hundred ninety five square feet, which resulted in an F A R of thirty three point one. And the current proposal, as you note, reduced the enclosed porch from four hundred twenty five square feet to four oh four, and it also eliminated the seventy square feet sauna on the top. So I had the revised plan with an F A R thirty two point five percent.
Okay, so then I'll.
And it dropped from thirty three point one, which was my previous calculation without the, you know, the the exemption that was taken. I mean, we had this, I I had, that was the way my memo was written the first time, but we had a conversation this time. So, I mean, I feel my memo is accurately addresses the F A R that's being added.
Yes, we spoke about it.
Yep.
So then my testimony should be that we are seeking approval of a thirty two point five percent variance, whereas thirty percent is the allowed, and not, as I testified, thirty one point seven, to include the exemption that you just referred to, Derek.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek, can you just tell me again, what is, what is the definition of an open porch?
Something that you can stick your arm through any opening.
In other words?
A screen porch is not an opening, is not an open porch.
A screen porch is because of what? Because of the?
The screening.
The screening.
Yeah.
Not the roof, the screening?
Yeah.
So without.
I mean, if it was an open porch with no side screening, I mean, it could be, they had, I guess, what, a hundred and twenty two square feet of a credit for.
Oh, okay.
Open porch, and it's confusing, Thomas, so, you know, it's.
I understand. We would have gotten an exemption of a hundred and twenty two because a hundred and twenty two in the ordinance is the allowed amount. You could be over on F A R if it's considered open. But because we have screens, we don't get the one twenty two exemption, and therefore, our variance is not for thirty one point seven, but rather for thirty two point five.
Correct.
The roof covering has no bearing on it.
No, I mean, it's already over impervious coverage. Obviously, to be a porch, it has to have a roof, but it's just.
Definition of a porch?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, interestingly enough, by us bringing it in a foot, we actually reduced the impervious coverage as part of this application, but it's, it's inconsequential. It's only twelve inches.
Okay. Okay, so.
And Mr. Bio, one more clarification. At the last hearing, your clients were proposing screens. Are they still proposing screens, or is there glass now too?
No, there's no glass. This is.
There's no glass. Okay.
Yes, and Mr. Peepsack's on, on, on our call, he certainly could opine on that if he wants. Rich, do you have something you want to add?
You gotta turn your microphone on, Mr. Peepsack, please.
Hello. Yes, we're looking at screens.
Mr. Peepsack, I, do you swear from any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes, we are not considering windows by any means, and we are considering screens, or we are putting screens there.
Yeah, I mean, to add to the, to color here, we're in New Jersey, moths, gnats, mosquitoes, flies, they're living with us, especially if we have lights in our structure, which are coming straight down. Screens are essential. If the covered roof is great if you want to be out there in the rain, but the screens are are critical. And if that's the trigger point, we're here seeking relief from the ordinance, you know, for that, for the excess above the one twenty two.
Derek, one last question from me. So the fact that they've got walls coming up around the porch and the fireplace, there's no difference in those than there is the screening?
No, I mean, honestly, if this is approved, they could, as of right, put windows in that addition, you know, down the road, and it would be complying, so.
Let me take a position that as a condition of approval, that we are not now nor later seeking to do that. And we would accept that as a condition of approval. Is that correct, Rich?
Yes.
In speaking for you? Yeah. This is really an outdoor amenity space that he and his wife would just love to have as a covered area. And there's no, there's no sinister desire to make the house any bigger.
Okay, so with that said, Mr. Peepsack, Mr. Bio, do you want to say anything else right now?
No.
No.
Okay, board members, you can take your screen down right now. Board members, do you have any question of the architect or the owner?
Let's see, take this. That way. Okay. Okay.
Steve?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. I I heard they agree that, you know, there would not be windows put in as a condition ever. Is there also no use of the roof condition forever? No sauna put on the roof forever? Is is that, is that something too that is is can be prohibited?
You mean without further approval?
Yes.
Yes, without returning to this board. I was waiting for Rich to opine on that. I don't even see him on here. I don't know what happened to him.
No, I'm right here.
Oh, which would that be an acceptable?
Yeah, I, we need to put some type of water diffuser off, so we don't have puddles of water up there, but it's going to have a proper roof, but no, no sauna up there.
There will, there will not be any residential uses of that roof, other than him going up there with a broom and sweeping off standing snow or water.
Or leaves or debris.
Or leaves, yeah.
All right, Mr. Bio, can you get rid of your screen so we can see all the board members?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can see all the board.
Uh, let's see, how do I, I see share. How do I unshare? No, that's not it.
Should be at the top of your page.
Top, all right, my screen. Oh, okay. I closed it.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, all right, so, Michael, you asked a question. Do you have any more questions right now?
No, I don't.
Okay, board member, any other board member questions of the owner or the architect? Yes, Donna.
The fireplace that you're proposing to put in, I think I saw on the planet it's a gas fireplace?
That's right. It's not a wood burning fireplace.
Okay, and it looks like, is it the, would it be the only fireplace?
Oh, it's, yeah, of course, it's the only fire. It's not a see-through. It's just a standard gas fireplace.
Okay, fireplace, there's no other fireplace in the home?
No. There's a vented fireplace in the home.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a conventional fireplace. Is that what you mean?
I don't understand, Donna. This, this is, it's just a gas fired conventional fireplace.
They have a family room gas fireplace.
Oh, okay, okay, so this would be the second one. Okay.
This would be, this would be, yes, an outdoor one. As I testified, it it's a nice controlled way to have an outdoor heating element, and it's, it's very different in terms of the experience, you know?
Okay, no, now I get it. Now, so there's two fireplaces that there would be. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, board members? George, did you?
No.
You didn't want to say. Okay. All right, so if we have no other questions right now of the owner or the architect, and the board has nothing else to say, after allowing Mr. Bio or the owner to make kind of a statement, we'll open this up to the public for comment.
I'll be quick. I'll make a statement. We, this use, and 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 land use speaks to these things, particularly from that Medici case where there's no substantial detriment to the public. I indicated the distances to neighboring properties uses of similar area being sixty five feet or greater, the the working with the board to diminish our impact by restricting the uses of the the space on the second floor by making it smaller, by having it in the backyard, by enclosing an outdoor covered porch and restricting its dispersion of sound and light, and having this wonderful amenity, which speaks to the welfare benefit to the homeowner. I think this is immensely approvable within your rights. That's my closing statement.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, we're going to open this up to the public for comment. Claudia, has anyone indicated they'd like to speak to this application? You're muted, Claudia. Claudia, you're still muted?
Yes, we have three people. One second.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, can you see the one?
I see, just waiting for them to begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. So I guess, please identify yourself, and if you're comfortable with it, give us your address.
I'm comfortable with it. My name is Arata Polinsky. This is my husband, Yara Nindbar. We live two doors away from one sixty four Prospect at one seventy Prospect.
And ma'am, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I do as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey. I've lived in Princeton with my husband for thirty four years. We bought one seventy Prospect Avenue. We bought one seventy Prospect Avenue August of two thousand fourteen. And respectfully restored this nineteen thirty-six house. Um, designed by an architect that designed two houses across the street. All of the houses in this neighborhood are substantially smaller, less than three thousand square feet. I appreciate that the board is here at nine forty-two P M. This is the second time that we are here. I thank you for your service. I do not appreciate that the residents were not notified of the extension. So that's one point. The other thing I do not appreciate is Mr. Bale's characterization. That this is a quote betterment to the public. And then saying there is no substantial detriment. In this case, the approval of adding more square footage. To already the maximum F A R. For the purpose of an outdoor fossil fuel burning fireplace, a bar and a T V. That is not eliminating sound by windows, and even though there is a roof. The sound will be traveling out. I'm not interested in hearing a T V two doors down where these lots are small. The I V N is a three-block walk from here. It has. Outdoor space with TVs with a bar. This is a community amenity, so um, we are strongly against this. Adding square footage to a house that is already so much larger than anything in the neighborhood. And if I may give you, I don't know if the zoning board members have had an opportunity to walk passes. But I would like to share just a couple photos to give you a sense of the scale here. Is that permitted?
Yes.
Ms. Polinsky, did you take these photos yourself?
I did.
And and when did you take them?
Um, the days today.
Recently, I mean, the last few weeks. Okay, well, why uh why don't we make this an exhibit for you then, so we'll call it. Projector exhibit. One, okay, thank you.
Okay, so if I can orient you, I'm just gonna try to, there we go. Um, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Prospect Avenue. I'm taking these from the sidewalk. On the left is Princeton Avenue. This is the first house from the corner that is having a very modest, smaller than this addition. You can see how the scale jumps up to this house, one sixty-four. And then comes down. We are the house past here. You can't even see, I couldn't capture it in a photograph. Because we've got mature trees on our um, front lawn. This house used to have mature trees in the front, along the side, they are all gone. This is bare and there's a driveway with cars. So when you look at the space between one sixty-four and our neighbors, uh, the Conigs at one sixty-eight. This is not a large space. This sound will travel from here to the next house, which is ours. I want to give you a sense of what this house was originally designed for, which is its mirror image. Um, uh, further down on Prospect Avenue where the lots are much bigger. So you see the house, it's flipped. This house next to it is far away, the other one even further away. That's what the original design was meant for, not for a narrow lot. So, um, what I would say is we are watching as awareness of neighborhood scale. And the importance of mature vegetation grows. Most notably, in the past two years, one and a half blocks away, um, the university was required. To maintain scale by moving buildings and preserving the material. One and a half blocks away is where we are. This is being disrespected. We have, um, we are. Completely against having any more area added there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Claudia, the next. Person to speak.
Quick, 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 Steve.
Yeah.
Okay, please, yes. Identify yourself. I know you're the neighbors, but please give us your address and.
My name is Frank Konings, one sixty-eight Prospect Avenue.
And my name is Vera Van de Velder, also one sixty-eight Prospect Avenue.
Okay, please.
And sir and ma'am, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
I do. Thank you.
Okay.
We can proceed rather briefly right now, because we, as soon as the uh new plans came. Um, we posted on Friday, we asked our architect Eric Holtermann to render a professional opinion. And you would like to transfer the word to Eric Holterman.
Okay, with.
Mr. Holterman?
Please identify yourself.
My name is Eric Holterman. I'm a principal at H M R Architects in Princeton. And I was the architect of Conings House uh a few years ago.
And Mr. Holterman, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, uh, my comments are based on the revised drawings dated ten six twenty-five. Uh, and and understanding that a D variance sets a higher standard for demonstrating hardship. Where change would not only not be detrimental, but ideally should offer some public benefit. Uh, the floor area of the current house at forty-five seventy-nine or thereabouts um. Was intentionally built just a few years ago to very near the absolute limit of allowable F A R. These applicants are the first owners of the house and uh, uh, with a comparatively new house, they're already looking to expand it. The F A R limit of thirty percent is already generous within this neighborhood context. Uh, the neighborhooding neighborhood properties. Uh, surrounding this house all appear to have lower F A R and in some cases much lower F A R. The proposed addition is described as a covered porch. Uh, Mr. Bayo uh described it as just a roof. But in fact, it is elevated to the first floor level with low walls, frame screen openings and eight-foot wide fireplace to accommodate a big T V. It appears that it could just as easily become a year-round room, very different from what was originally described as a simple covered patio. Um, I however, I did hear the previous comment that there is no intention of uh ever enclosing it. Uh, however, its design is um closer to a uh i- enclosed room than it is to an uh 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 just a roof or a covered patio. Despite eliminating the second floor deck and the sauna, the addition is still pretty tall for a simple porch addition. Surprisingly. The plans do not include vertical dimensions for the porch or building section. But the drawing appears to show the top of the roof at approximately thirteen or fourteen feet above grade. With the top of the wide chimney at fifteen or sixteen feet above grade. As drawn, the roof is flat without any slope, presumably uh the sloped roof would add a little bit more height. The fence between properties, as Mr. Bayo pointed out, is six feet tall, so the addition would be uh visible and audible. Particularly with the T V from um Conings adjacent rear yard. Accordingly, the proposed addition will result in loss of visual and sound privacy at the uh adjacent rear yard. The rear walls of this house and the Conings House next door are generally aligned. This means that both houses have a clear view behind and to the sides of their respective rear yards. A new addition that blocks the clear view to the side will also have a negative visual impact. Floor area ratios vary within Princeton based on the specific characteristics of each zone. When virtually all of the surrounding properties are under or far under the F A R limits, as is the case in this neighborhood. It's hard to see a compelling reason to exceed those reasonable limits in this case. Thank you.
Hey, Claudia, do we have any else, anyone else who'd like to speak?
Yes.
There are no more hands.
Yes, I would like, uh, yeah.
Okay.
I, thank you, Eric, for uh, your statement. I would like to uh. Add that uh in spite of what Mr. Bio is saying, I think it's a bit dishonest of just saying we are. Uh, raising the wall from uh, two foot, two feet to four feet. Uh, but he is not saying where he starts. He is not starting at grade level. The passio is several steps higher than grade level. If they would really want to do a covered porch, just to be, and I understand the insects are. A problem, that's why we have the covered porch, but it's a covered porch. It's not something with a T V. With a fireplace, because we will, not only will there be a building, there will be a. A structure, a chimney, a wall, and also I have no idea at what level. Uh, this will start. If they really want a covered porch, why didn't they start at? Grade level, why does it need to be above grade level? So. I have no idea the wall that they are referring to, will it be above our fence, will it be below our fence? We just don't know, and if it's below the fence, then it doesn't make uh any difference at all. The fact that there are gonna be a T V is definitely gonna be a noise problem for us. Either when we are on our covered porch or when we are on our uncovered passio. So I don't think it should be approved to what it is now. Thank you.
Okay, um, again, Claudia, anyone else want to speak?
No more hands.
Okay, so we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Bio. Or the owner, do you want to say anything before we go into executive session?
Sure, I'd like to say something. Go ahead, Rich, you go first.
I'm not sure about the wall dimension being above grade or below grade, and I'll let Tom speak to that. But one of the adjustments we were making was to raise the wall to eliminate sound and light. And the point I'm gonna make is we are entitled to have an outdoor fire pit. And I can burn wood in that fire pit, seasoned firewood. And that means the firewood smoke may or may not drift. Into your wafting aroma. Also, the light will be illuminated from the top of the roof onto the patio. Now, if I have a covered porch, that light will not illuminate and the ambient light will not come your way. I can also have an outdoor T V projected upon my house. I have done that before. And I can do that tomorrow. But I don't want to do that because I'm seeking to modify this plan, not once, but twice. So that I can enjoy my backyard without being a burden to my neighbors. But I can put a fire pit out there, I can put a television out there, as long as I'm below the sound ordinance, I can do that all day. And so in making this application, I am asking for the variance to meet. Our needs of Princeton, while we are developing and trying to bring Princeton forward. One of the earlier comments was speaking about homes being below three thousand square feet. My immediate neighbor's home, which was in that exhibit, is coming in below fifty-six hundred square feet. So to my neighbor, one seventy, I have a, with respect, difference of opinion. The homes on Broadmere, which are directly across from me, are certainly in excess of three thousand square feet. We live two blocks from the Princeton University Football Stadium. They played Yale last week and they roared till ten thirty at night. I simply knew that when I moved in, and I think a lot of people moved into that town. Excited and anticipated to enjoy the the university. So in making my application, I want the board to consider what could happen. I could burn firewood, or if I moderate and keep it enclosed, perhaps it's a little less noise. There will be no smoke and the illumination from the T V wouldn't be enclosed, not upon the side of my house. Or on a projector screen. So these were my actions, and so. I'm going to use my porch and I'm trying to use it in the least offensive way to anyone. Um, and this is why I hired an architect to come up with a way to do that. But if the board feels that I am overstepping my need and. I will try to make modifications. But this plan that I put forward, I think is the best way to suit all needs. And I rest right there.
Um, thank you. And having heard that and and hearing the comments from the neighbors, the peepsacks want to be good neighbors, not bad neighbors. Um, I'm sorry for the assertions of size that came out. Some of those comments um can be a little difficult to take because. Mr. Peepsack didn't build that house, he bought that house, um. The idea is to be good neighbors and along those lines, not more said. We'd like to uh request an adjournment and we'd like to come back and see if we can address some of these new comments that I wrote back next month. Is that possible, uh, Chairman?
I see, uh, Karen, I see no problem with that to you.
No, no, I mean, uh, since we are continuing the hearing and carrying it. Well, we would need to announce a date certain tonight, otherwise the applicant would need to renotice. So the next meeting, is it November? Uh, it's an early meeting, isn't it, there because of the league, it's.
Early, I think.
November twelfth.
What's the purpose for this um? Request of an adjournment, I mean, the the.
The request is to address concerns of the architect about the um alignment of our house relative to the neighbor's house. Um, the uh to address the height of my wall and the usability of the porch relative to the fence. And to look at options of reducing that with my client and the uh impact of that and the the. Be submittal of a revised application to make, well, you know, to make a better argument. The the goal is to seek favorability to the use of this rear patio, um. It the we're that's that's the purpose, um, sir.
Okay, I, oh, I mean, I guess.
That is, Derek, do we have a rule against, you know, is it three strikes or it's a perpetual ability to keep coming back and back and back and back? Well, this is, in all the years that I've been on this board, this is the very first time that anyone has asked to come back for a third bite at the apple. So I'm not opposed to it, but I just want to understand, how long is this gonna go on?
I don't believe there's any limitation, um, Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, um, on the.
No, it's it's within the boards, it's within the board's discretion, Harlan. So, but but if the board is inclined to. Allow the applicant to come back again, are there any other comments the board wants to? Throw out to the applicant?
I'd like to make one, um, assuming that you do come back in, there's gotta be some justification for the. For the extra two and a half percent of F A R for the addition of the size of the porch. Or this this enclosed porch or covered porch you're trying to create. That is, in a sense, floor area, so you're you're still. Two and a half percent over, so there's gotta be some justification for that additional square footage that you need to address.
Okay, fair enough.
Board members, any other comments?
Mr. Bale, just just a thought, I don't know if that would have any uh impact for the board, but. Um, you said your client doesn't want to put glass. Um, if they had glass and screens, I'm assuming that noises like the T V. Uh, would be even further minimized, so I don't know if that would make a difference to the. So I don't know if that would make a difference to the board members. And I don't know if it makes a difference to the neighbors. I'm not sure that screens and glass are just screens. If all things, all things being equal, causes it to be more obtrusive or less obtrusive. I just don't know if having glass makes, perhaps that can make a difference, I don't know.
It would make a difference, but it would also make it not really an outdoor space.
Well, that's true, that's true, but I think as Derek pointed out.
I'm sure that's what their goal is at this point.
Well, that's true.
The goal is to have a controlled environment so they can enjoy their outdoor space without imposing themselves on any neighbors. And I speak for the Peepsack here, they really want to be here for a while. The requirement that anything go for a variance is because the house is maxed out, and it's an open patio. So the covered porch speaks to a better use of that patio, and that's what I meant by betterment. But we'll, we'll come back next month and try to make stronger arguments, and then the board can mitigate it, or litigate it, not mitigate it, litigate it.
All right, so when, Derek, do we have an availability at the next hearing?
We have, yeah, we have three cases, we could put this one on first. Carrie, at the next meeting would be November twelfth.
And you would have updated application in by November second.
Yes, sir.
All right, got it.
For the benefit of those neighbors who are here tonight or are listening at home, the applicant is not obligated to renotice, we are announcing the next date for this hearing. So if you look on the website, you'll see whatever revised plans they submit.
Just to clarify, Derek, this is the third, this would be the third application for that. So we'd have three on November twelfth.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other comments before we go on to the next application? But he said something.
I'd like to say something, if I may.
Who's speaking?
The speaker.
Arata Polinski from one seventy prospect.
Well, I mean, at this point, the, the public portion of the comments is over. We've been in executive session, we're going to continue it to the next hearing. So I would think that we probably should wait until we hear this case again at the next, at the next session.
The only request is to notify the residents, because the original notice came so close to the hearing.
Ms. Polinski, you're here tonight, and what you're hearing is that it's being carried to November twelfth. The, any updated plans will be provided to the town by November second, and.
Actually, that's a Sunday, I mean.
It'll be the Friday prior, the Friday prior.
Thank you, Tom.
So, you know, in terms of availability, so the public, Derek, I'm sure that can, you know, they can be made available to the public earlier than.
Yeah, Mr. Bio.
October thirty-first.
Mr. Bio, if you could present digital copies so we could upload those to the website.
I will, Derek.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So for that reason, Ms. Polinski, we're not obligating them to send out another notice. You're here tonight. The board is stating it, they're saying it's going to be carried. There will be a continued hearing on November twelfth, same time, same login information. So that, that's why they're not being obligated to notice again.
Okay. All right, so, thank you, and we'll see you at the next hearing.
Thank you, board, have a good night.
Okay. Let us go on to our last case, which is Z twenty-five dash six eighty-two, three eleven, Western Way, block eighty-seven oh-three, lot thirteen, in the R five T-zone. Who will be presenting this application?
I'll be talking first, my name is Max Hayden. Ginny Bryant's architect.
Steve, I'll just indicate that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the case tonight.
Good, thank you. All right, Mr. Hayden, please proceed.
Does the board want to hear from Derek first?
I want to hear Derek's memo first, yes.
Thank you, Chairman. The applicant tonight is Brian V A B Living Trust and Brian S P P Living Trust. They're the owners, excuse me, in Virginia Bryant. Trustee and individually is the applicant, seeking a floor area ratio variance pursuant to N J S forty, colon, fifty-five dash seventy D four, to allow for the placement of a shed in the front yard. Parking setback variance is requested to permit parking within the twenty-five-foot front yard setback, and this is necessitated by the conversion of a one garage bay out of the two-car garage to create a mudroom and stair to allow access to the second floor of the house. Property is located in the R five T-zone, subject to the use and bulk regulations in accordance with sections ten B, two forty-six, two fifty-five, two fifty-five point two, the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. And the subject property is noncompliant with the required twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty square foot lot area. The existing is seven thousand eight hundred and sixty square feet. Lot depth requirements, one hundred feet, the subject is seventy-six point two-six feet. The front yard setback requirement is twenty-five, the existing is twenty-one point four. Rear yard setback requirement is fifteen, existing is eight feet. Side yard setback on the right requirement is fifteen, the existing is eleven and a half. And the height to setback ratio on the side is one to one, the existing is one point two-three to one. And the height to setback in the rear is one to one as well, and it's two to one. The F A R existing is thirty-two point one, is required, the existing is thirty-two point four-five. I mean, the F A R was applied after all these homes in this development were constructed. As I stated earlier, the applicant is proposing to convert one of the two parking spaces within the existing two-car garage into a mudroom, additional storage space and a staircase leading to the existing family room on the second floor. The second required parking space, which there are two required in this zone, will be in the driveway in front of the garage, requiring a front yard parking setback variance. The applicant is also proposing a shed in the front yard, which requires a setback variance and an F A R variance, as I indicated earlier, for the added square footage of that. The proposed parking space in the driveway and the shed location require bulk variances. The parking setback in the front, the requirement is twenty-five feet. The proposed will be fifteen point five for the parking space in the front, and the shed should be setback twenty-five feet, they're not permitted in the front yard. The proposed setback is fourteen feet. And I'll note, this is an extremely oddly shaped lot. If the shed was placed behind the rear of the house, it would actually be exempt from F A R. So they requested C one and C, or C one criteria for the, the two setback variances in the shed. They are exempt up to three hundred square feet when located behind the rearmost portion of the house. That's challenging in this situation, so there is an F A R variance, the requirement is thirty-two point one. The existing F A R is thirty-two point four-five, and the proposed will be thirty-three point four-seven. And as you're aware, with F A R variances, it requires a five out of seven affirmative votes. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, just one question, Derek, in this, in this area, it appears that the, that the cartway, the paved area is much further from the right-of-way line than is usual.
It's a huge right-of-way on this, all these properties, especially the ones on the end of the little nexus where it meets. It's an odd situation, so it reads as a yard when you, you drive up to it.
Yeah, and then, and then that curve at the end of the property, again, goes in, the setback line goes in, or the right-of-way line goes quite a ways into the property.
Yeah.
So it, it limits things. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because when I looked at, when I drove over there, and then I looked at the aerial photo, it's dramatic in a sense that the drawing, when you show the car in front of the garage, is not representative of what's out there. There's a greater distance between the roadway and the, and the garage. Okay, all right, Mr. Hayden, please proceed.
If I could share, I have a little PowerPoint presentation.
Mr. Hayden, oh, we first need to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
It will.
And you are a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am, and in the state of Pennsylvania, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Massachusetts. I've appeared before your zoning board several times.
We'll accept you as an expert in your field.
And you, sir, you're the architect of record for the project, correct?
Of this big, big project.
Yes.
Karen, would you, would you like to, you'd like to swear in the owner at the same time here?
Sure, well, where, where is the owner? Oh, I can't see her now, but. Oh, man, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, please proceed.
Okay, good evening, everyone, thank you for, and I'm just trying to get to the slideshow here. Client approached me to provide a mudroom for her house. Part of the reason is she has a special needs daughter who's twenty years old now, and wants a little sense of independence. So by allowing the construction of a mudroom and a staircase up to a common room that they call the pajama room, this will allow their, their daughter to come and go a little bit without having to, you know, say goodbye to mom every single time. And they also have two dogs, which Rachel is responsible for seeing, taking outside. And this gives her not only a little responsibility, but a way into her pajama room. So that took up one of the garage bays, and as Derek said, the parking is requirement is two, one is in the garage, one is, could be in the driveway, but because of the large cartway, as you said, Mr. Cohen, and the odd configuration of the lot, we actually can't meet that requirement. This is a view of the house, and I say proposed, because when we create the mudroom, we'll be keeping the garage door, we'll just be putting black painted plywood on the inside and not altering the front of the house at all. This is view of the side yard between the neighbor's house. To the left, it's a very small side yard, this is another view of the side yard. This is, the picture to the left is where the door will be going into the mudroom, and the picture on the right is again the rear yard, and you can see how tight it is. So there really isn't any space to put a shed that would, you know, look nice. This is the site plan and location map, it is a very oddly configured lot. The lot, the dotted line at the top of the page is the edge of the pavement. And this is kind of a triangle with a bull nose on it, it's not a four-sided piece of land. So the shed ends up being in what is a front yard. But the town actually owns a lot of the land in here, where my cursor is. Here's some of the drawings of showing the door on the side, and, you know, the pajama room where Ginny and her daughter watch movies at the end of the day. And then there's, we're not doing anything other than putting a staircase in and creating the mudroom. This is an overview from Google Maps of, I'm sorry, of all the houses on Western Way. There are eighteen houses whose driveways directly dump onto Western Way. There is one house at the corner, and I'm sorry, I'm not, there we go, over here, that actually is on Cedar Lane. Of the eighteen houses, eight houses have no garages. Six have single-car garages, and four have double-car garages. This is a quick view of Cedar and, I'm sorry, Western, Southern Way here and Western Way. This is the large piece of ground that's that municipality owns, and this is part of the tree area in front of Ms. Bryant's lot. These are houses directly across from the street. There's a single car, this is, looks like a double car garage, but it's only a single car. Most of these lots have, there is a seventy-foot right-of-way. The road is approximately twenty-five feet, lead, twenty-five feet into each of these yards. So although all the property owners maintain these pieces of ground, they're in fact owned by the town. This is Ms. Bryant's house, that's where the mudroom will go. This is the adjoining neighbor's house. The house directly across the street, there had been a garage at one point, it's no longer there. This is just moving down west towards Harrison Street. This is a house that has no garage, may have had one at one point, but it's long gone. Again, a newer house, no garage. A garage whose plantings obscure the garage door. Ain't nobody parking in that garage. House next door, the garage has been taken out, right there, that was a garage, no longer existing. That has a single garage, this house has no garage. That's, I think that's from the previous slide, no garage, no garage, no garage, no garage, two-car garage, a house that was expanded, the garage was expanded several years ago. And most recently, Ms. Bryant will talk to you a little bit about what, what has occurred within the house. This is at the corner of Harrison and Western Way, this is probably the biggest lot on Western. They may actually conform to the parking setback, and they have the two-car garage. This is an overview of, again, Google Maps, showing a very approximate width of the cartway. So it, it, it especially affects Ms. Bryant's property because of the odd shape of her lot, but it truly affects all of them. And then this is a tax map, which shows the seventy-foot cartway on Southern. It's only fifty on, I'm sorry, seventy-foot on Western, it's only fifty on Southern. I'm sorry, I don't have a better picture of the yard to show where the shed is, but the shed will not be visible. If we actually put the shed where it could fit, it would be in a lawned area with grass, it could be visible. This is all heavily treated with deciduous and fir trees, and that shed will not be. You can see how tight the yard is here, there's no place for it. It is for garden tools and seat cushions, Ms. Bryant has.
Okay, you're back, you're muted, Max.
Max.
You're muted?
I hope I wasn't gone long. Did you see all the pictures of the Harrison?
When, I, I hate to ask you to do this, but can you go back and just bring up the view taken from the intersection of Western and Southern Ways, looking towards the property? Because I think if you can point to where the shed's going to be, you can demonstrate that it will be. you can demonstrate that it will be cer, within the wooded area.
The shed is probably about twenty feet in from where the cursor is going that way. And I'm sorry, I, I don't, I should have had a photograph.
Yeah, it's not up on the screen and you're, you're not sharing your screen.
I'm not sharing. Okay.
But it's, it's, just to clarify, the, the shed would be within the wooded area, not in the open area.
And I'm sorry, I'm sure. Try to zoom out here. There we go.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
So you can all see the cursor?
Yes.
Okay. So from this point towards Harrison Street, the shed is probably twenty feet in. So it's, you know, well hidden by all of this greenery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir Hayden, would you like all of these photos and the documents to be collectively, we could call them Exhibit A one?
Be great. I already sent this to Claudia earlier in the day, but happy to email it again. Truly, this, we're doing such minor modifications to the house, nothing will be visible really from the street. It really allows the client to enjoy and use her house. Everyone parks with, in their driveway. Few people park within the garages when they have them. Many of the houses do not have garages. The shed will be well hidden and it, it will be nice looking too. So even if it was to be seen, it wouldn't be a detriment. So I, I think this is a fairly, hopefully the board will see this as a fairly straightforward application and that there are really no cons to it. Jenny, if you'd like to say something further, I think the board would certainly listen to you.
Sure. Thank you. And so I think the shed wouldn't be visible from any side, actually. And I'm remembering that when my daughter was young, we had a jungle gym back there. And we, I think the town planted all the lush plantings that we were just looking at on that view from the point of Southern and Western were.
Looking at it. Excuse me. Can you, Max, can you take it down? Take the screen down?
Sure.
Yeah, those plantings there are pretty extensive of skip laurel that completely block the view from Cedar. And then all around sort of the, the triangular point of my property is a pretty dense hedge row. I don't think it would be visible at all from any angle in the back.
It's the height of the shed.
It's about twelve feet.
What's standard like?
Yeah.
Yeah. I feel like it's smaller than the jungle gym used to be.
Shed is eight by ten and I, I believe it's less than twelve feet. It's a simple gable roof.
Right. And then with regard to the, the driveway, I guess the way that the lot is, obviously it looks like my property is a lot larger than it is. I think our lot size is one tenth of an acre, but it looks, you know, much larger. And this, the concept of taking over a portion of the garage to make it as a mudroom. And I guess I was quite surprised to learn that my driveway, which is pretty substantial, I think can hold three cars, but that doesn't, it, it doesn't count in, in the current zoning laws. Again, the, the neighborhood is old and obviously was built before a lot of the current laws were in place. Some of the neighbors park on the street every night. And so what we're talking about is just to make this mudroom accessible for my daughter as Max mentioned. She's a young adult with disability, an intellectual disability. So she will be living close by forever. And she has a service dog and we want to sort of give her a little autonomy, let her have some independent living while not living independently. And to make that accessible for her, that she can kind of stay close by, but not, you know, she won't be living on her own. So that's what we're thinking that, the thought was we have this room now. Max, you called it a pajama room. We call it a pajama lounge. And to just have that be a, a place where she could actually have her own separate entrance. And still accessible, you know, to sort of my side of the house for nightmares in the middle of the night as we had last night. But to give her a little space that she can take the dogs out and come in and go into her hangout space in her pajama lounge. And so the intention is that the outside of the house doesn't actually look any different at all, except that we're going to put a door over on the side that will be her mudroom into a separate little garden area where she can be with her dogs. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Max, do you want to say anything else?
Oh, I, you know, hopefully the board will see this as a really minor application and that there really is no detriment to anyone in the community. And it really would benefit this client and her daughter greatly.
All right. If there are no other board members, do you have any questions of the applicant, the architect?
Just for clarification, either for the applicant or Mr. Hayden, how old is the house? Does anybody know when it was built?
Forty-five, I believe.
Nineteen forty-five?
Yeah.
All right. We have, if there are no questions of the board, we'll open this up to the public for comment. Unless Max, do you want to say anything before we do that or the owner? You said everything you need to say. Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll open this up to the public. So if anybody in the audience would like to speak on behalf of this application, please indicate that by raising your hand along the bottom of the screen will recognize you and you may speak. Claudia, does anybody, is there anyone out there that's indicated they'd like to speak?
There are no hints.
Okay. We'll give it a couple of seconds just to make sure. And okay, if there's no one out there, we'll close the portion, public portion of the hearing. Once again, Mr. Hayden or Ms. Bryant, if you want to say anything before we go into executive session, you're more than welcome to do it.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, questions, comments, motions? In my opinion, this, this lot is almost the definition of a, of a piece of land that's restrictive in terms of the applicable zoning. I mean, it's a, it's an awkwardly shaped lot that's existed for many, many years. And doing anything on it appears to be difficult compounded by the fact that the street pavement, as I mentioned earlier, seems to offset. So the appearance of the, the long driveway is in a sense an illusion. So I think this is a, in my, again, in my opinion, I think this is a very reasonable application. And I think the, the shed, although in a prominent location, if there was no vegetation, would be unusual. But in this case, it'll just be in the woods in a sense. My comment. Anyone else like to say anything?
Yeah, I, I agree. It's, it seems quite reasonable. The, the only thing I would add is we might want to write into it. I, I didn't see anywhere in the application, although it was stated verbally that the size is eight by ten of the shed. So maybe just add that in.
With the height as well. It's a good point.
Sure.
If someone would like to, if there are no other comments or questions, if someone would like to make a motion?
I'll move to.
What's that? I'm sorry. Who approved? Who was that?
I'll second. I.
Oh, okay.
Bernice moved to approve, I think.
Okay. All right. Was there any, any questions on the motion there or the comments that, that Bernice added would like added? Okay. So Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
You're muted, George. You're still muted.
There you go.
Yes, yes.
Jeremiah Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, that, I think that concludes our hearing for this evening. And we will be back on November twelfth for a full evening. So thank you all, board members, and have a good month.
Good night. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Hey, Steve, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Now that we're done. If, if, if in theory, a applicant decided to withdraw and come back a month later, can we speak up at all and say how we feel about the application before they do that?
Yes, I don't see any reason we can't. We can give them, you know, as, we can give them comments. I made the comment on this last application that I thought that the application, the applicant needed to justify the
Right.
the size. And so, yes, I think it's appropriate for us to at least give them the benefit of our comments. Derek, does that seem reason, excuse me, does that seem reasonable, Derek?
Yeah, I mean, but did you say withdraw an application and then come back?
No, no, come back where, where they want to just.
I mean, they can carry it. It's, it's a little odd to do it more than once, you know, but I, I mean, but so speaks to the importance of talking to your neighbor, which I kind of tell everybody to do, but everybody doesn't listen to me, so.
But I was just curious, you know.
What'd you say, Derek?
I said it's.
I was kidding.
But just, just, just in theory, just in theory, not in a kind of point, but if, if somebody were trying to justify the noise or the smoke or the this, and I felt very strongly that none of those things were important. What was important was the fact that the property was already maxed out. Can I say something like that? I mean, I mean, I was tending to be, you know, I just, I just felt I didn't care about whether they had a screen or a television or a fireplace or whether they were higher or lower. It was just the.
You know, I mean, my guess is if he doesn't come back with another good reason, that his option would be basically to try to get the increase under one percent. But my guess is that's not in his thinking. He's all about. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Excuse me. No, 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 George, finish. I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I don't think we can discuss this.
We don't want to discuss this whole application.
If, if there are more than two of us, we're not allowed to talk about it. I'm just talking in a hypothetical. Should I say something? Could you say something that, you know, before they, before they take it off the table, they say, you know, my issue is this as opposed to to that.
Well, I, I think you just, I, I don't know exactly how to phrase it, but you might want to, you might want to direct it in a sense of additional information you might need to make the decision. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but I think, I think the, the idea of it is good. I'd, I'd like other comments.
I mean, your point was a very much of a legalistic point. Mine was just kind of a, you know, I just, I think you've maxed out the property already, you know.
Well, I guess.
My, my, my point was very simple. Either it's what Steve Cohen just said, come back with a new justification, or you're going to have to change the application. And make it less, less, you know, but that's just my view that those are the two options.
Michael, you understand this stuff better than we do. What do you think?
Well, see, I, I was surprised he asked for a continuance because nobody indicated how they were going to vote at all. I mean, he might've gotten a read from me last time, but you know, the board was pretty, pretty silent and listened and didn't really, you know, indicate that they've already made a decision. So I don't know why he actually withdrew it.
I think he, I think in my, I think he felt threatened just by the nature of his comments. And I think he was a little frustrated. He was a little frustrated.
Maybe he got threatened by the continued, you know, neighbor's comments, but the board didn't comment.
No, we didn't comment at all.
So I, I thought that that was, I guess.
I think we've got to stop doing this.
Part of not having an attorney. An attorney would say, hey,
Put a sock on it.
A reading board, you know.
I live on the next block and I can assure you, we hear everything going on on the campus all the time. And, you know, having a television isn't going to add any more noise to the neighborhood than, than this, you know, the eating clubs and their parties. So.
At the end of the day, FAR variances, can the site accommodate the, the extra, you know, development?
There you go. That's exactly it. Yeah, they've got a, they had to have a better justification.
And they got off on the wrong, I mean, the guy didn't come to the first meeting. This meeting was much more prepared. And he had, you know, rationale. We did this, we did that, and here's the distance and, but we shouldn't discuss this case, but.
No. Clearly, in the first, in the first instance, they had never talked to their neighbors. They had no idea that their neighbors were going to be so vehemently against it. So, all right. I just hate to send them off like that without telling them how I feel about it.
I think he had a good idea. I mean, there were no, there were no positive comments from anybody. So.
Yeah. But, you know, I think if they want to revise something and come back, I think there's, there's a hope that board members will at least listen to their revisions. Now, if you speak up, when they say they want to come back and you say, well, basically, well, it's probably no reason to come back for my vote, you know, you don't say it that directly. I'm, I'm not sure that that's something you should do.
Yeah.
Indicate that you've, indicate that you've already decided.
Right.
But you could say that my concern is not the fireplace or the television. My concern is the.
The bulk.
The bulk.
Yep. Yeah.
Nuance a little bit, right?
A little nuance. All right. Thank you very much.
Everyone.
Yes, take care.
See you soon. Sorry. Too many meetings, huh?
Buddy.
Yeah. Yeah, go home, Derek. Later.